Good evening. This is the City of Southfield's regular meeting agenda of the City Council, May 8th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Amanda Wynn.
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Banks?
Present.
Councilmembers Braywell?
Yeah, yeah. Here.
Councilmember Cruz? Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Hope?
Here.
There's a call.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda is our communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. I'd like to just remind everyone to please silence your phones. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. The first speaker is Keith Harris. The next speaker is Olivia Littleton. You can sit there.
Good evening to my mayor and city council. My name is Olivia Littleton. I live on Adrian Road.
You can speak into the mic.
Did you hear anything?
Yeah.
I live on Adrian Road in Sherwood subdivision. I have this letter here. In 2021, Mayor Seiver surveyed Adrian Road, Fillmore, Goldwood, and Alte Besta. He indicated these streets were in need of repair. These streets were scheduled for repair 2023. On Friday, May 5th, I received a phone call from Engineering Department, Mrs. Lee Schultz, stating only streets east of Laker Boulevard would be included in the road project. Thus, leaving all west of Laker Boulevard would be completed in 2024 or 2025. Mrs. Lee Schultz stated these proposals would be forwarded to the council today for approval. Since proposals can be changed or altered, we are asking streets west of Laker Boulevard be repaired, including Adrian, Fillmore Place, Goldwood, and Alte Besta, and Laker Boulevard. And those east of Laker Boulevard be repaired in 2024 or 2025. I returned Mrs. Schultz's call today since a voice message was recorded thanking her for responding to my call, and informing her we disagreed with her proposal. Thank you for listening to me, and also I have some copies because I don't want you all to forget that I was here representing our subdivision. Thank you again.
You can give them to the city clerk.
Council President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Littleton?
Ms. Littleton, if I may respond to you, I did write that letter, and I'm only as good as the information I am given. And apparently, there's been a complication with this project. So I was on the phone before the meeting with Ms. Schultz. I agree with your assessment. If anything, those streets have gotten worse. So you have no argument with me, and I don't think you do with the council. We know they're bad, and the engineering department is the final determination on scheduling these things. We'll have further discussion on this, but I certainly want you to know, I have not given up on you, and the work, it's obvious. I mean, I rode it on a bicycle, and I had to watch the pothole so I didn't fall off the bike.
Like I said, over the two years, they've gotten even worse.
Of course they have.
So I appreciate you addressing me, and I thank you all again. And I will leave you.
Thank you. Next, we have Max Neuser.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak to the council tonight. I'm applying for the purchase of City land. This will be my second.
Is the mic on? There should be a green light.
Say your name and address for the reference.
Address for the reference?
Name and.
My address for the reference. My address, your name and your name.
Okay.
Max Neuser, my address, 21300, Wallace Drive.
Okay. You can continue.
Sorry, I've never been to a council meeting, so sorry. Yeah, so I'm applying for the purchase of City land. This is my second attempt, and I've been made aware of a requirement to put up a cash bond for the difference of the discounted land value and the actual true cash value of the property. This is not a requirement which I came into, and I applied back in 2020, but was not highly perceived as construction at that time for labor shortage and material shortages. So my question is if the council would entertain any alternatives equally valuable to a cash bond to ensure that a primary residence is constructed, perhaps an alternative like a lien or a penalty loss? That's my only question.
Okay. Is it one of the vacant lots?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our city attorney can...
Good evening. How are you? We've been talking via email, so we're going to sit down and talk Thursday morning, and we'll address his concerns there also. But hi, nice to meet you in person.
I just wasn't sure if I should just be a few running to address the council because you mentioned that the clause was introduced by the council.
Right, there's a resolution about the purchase of the vacant properties and the buildable vacant parcels.
Correct.
I've been fortunate enough with the City of Water and Sewer Department to get aligned with what I need to find, not with the local power provider to figure out what I need to find. I have the Building Department, Chuck Jones, and Dionne DeAngelo, the building plan reviewer, so they've made me aware that everything looks good from their side. Also, I'm happy that they set the law up here as possible, so I'm very interested, and I'd like to move forward to building a house for myself and my partner. So just trying to figure out the finances.
Okay, so our city attorney said she's been in touch with you, so if something needs to come back to the council, then we will definitely address it at that point, but we have faith in our city attorney.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Crystal Isaac. And I've been asked by the Cable Department, who's videoing, if you can stand at the lectern, it would be easier.
Video me? Oh, okay.
The microphone's not picking up the table mic very well.
Okay. Much better?
Yes.
Great. Greetings and good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council members. My name is Crystal Isaac, and my address is 23516 Loser Road here in Southfield. It is actually Metal Grove Villa condominiums. I'm here about a matter of property that is next door to our condominium complex. It is Dear Brooks condo. They have been building there for several years. It has been an issue ever since they started to build. We've had a broken fence, of which they will not replace, due to them cutting down the trees and destroying our property. We've had projectiles that have broken a window because of their cutting down of the trees. There's been water that has been constantly sitting on the property. I called the city inspector several times. They finally came out, they drained the place, but now they've dug a hole this bigger, and there's water all the way up to the top. It looks like it's going to be a pond. I did not see a pond on the original plans that were sent to us when I was a member of the board. It is an eyesore. There's no fence, there's no fencing, there's some orange plastic stuff that they put up, it falls down, and then they don't put it up again. And so every day when I walk out of my home, I see miles of dirt, lots of water, and animals, and debris that people have thrown over in the water. It is a disgrace. No one should have to see that as they walk out of their home. I'm embarrassed to have people come to my home as a result of how the property looks, and I'm sure we don't want that kind of visual in our neighborhoods. And so I am here to ask that if we can possibly have them remove that pond and do something about it, that they put up a fencing. When you drive to Bloomfield Hills and other locations, you see nice fencing, and you can't tell what's going on. We don't have that problem, and that we just do better, that they as a company do better in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Isaac, I'd just like to point out our code enforcement and building official are in the audience. If you want to raise your hand, please. They can also help you with more specifics. As they're the ones who would monitor the project and some of the issues that you're discussing.
Okay, great, because it's a health hazard, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Stacy Bowen.
Good evening to the mayor and council president and council members. I just really have a question. I was actually at the police station this morning, and a couple months ago, my car was broken into, they stole my steering wheel, whoever did the theft. So this morning, I go out to work at about 7:30, and I notice that my passenger's side front window is broken. So what I am curious about is two things. Is the police department having any success apprehending the people that are doing damage to other people's property? And is there any money in the budget for them to patrol along where I live? Because I, again, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention my name and my address. My name is Stacy Bowen. I live at 23530 Loser Road, and I'm in the Metal Grove Villa condos. And my condo is on the side that's, if I walk across the street, McClung Avenue is there. And it's pretty dark at night, so I just have concerns. I am a single person. We have had, I'll just be blunt, a murder in our complex before, so I have some concerns.
Okay, thank you. We will talk to the police chief, but I know in the past, they have been successful at catching some of the break-ins, and as the police chief has told me, and I'm sure he's told this to several of my colleagues as well, you catch one, and the next day there's a new, there's someone else.
Exactly. And whoever this next group were, they didn't know how to break a window.
But Mr. Mayor, you had to come in.
I can, just last week, there were three arrests for car thieves, and one arrest for somebody breaking into cars, and it's quite correct. It's not a Southfield problem, it's a problem all over. And unfortunately, and I'm not saying this is your case, but the typical MO is they go through parking lots and pull handles to see if, and then people leave all kinds of things in their car.
Well, and I don't.
Yeah.
That was the thing that disturbed me.
And I didn't say...
Yeah.
But this is what they're looking for, valuables, and we get reports of people having stolen guns that they've left in the car, and their gun's stolen. So actually, I wanted to respond to this because this is something to remind everybody about. It's a problem, and some people in the community are not helping because they leave stuff in the car. And I know that's not your case.
Right.
But again, we get the daily report of police activities, and I'm pleased to tell you that last week, four arrests.
Okay, that's excellent.
But there, as the council president said, there are more out there.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next is Dee Paramore. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council President, Mayor, and Council. I'm Davida Paramore. I live at 19255 Greenwall Drive. I'm also president of Roseland Woods, and I'm here to address lots of concern in our sub, as well as Washington and surrounding subs, in regard to group homes. When I first moved into the neighborhood, there was a lot of talk about group homes and what we can do, but the situation, we were told that there was really nothing we could do about group homes in the neighborhood, in which we as residents, we do love people, but as of late, the situation has become out of control. There's been fights with group home members, patients, and workers, to the point where one of them was arrested and threw, broke windows. Then there was another argument, that was a couple of months ago or so, and then the last week, there was arguing outside, and in the meantime, we're starting to see residents of the group homes walking the streets all day, turning around in driveways, standing around, and I'm sure you received an email, Mayor Seiver, and also council president, in regards to, people have reported their garage doors, garage remote being stolen, and things of that nature. So a lot of the questions are, how many group homes are allowed in one set radius? Also, there's been talk of a halfway house, so we're not sure if it's like prison release, or mental health, or drug rehab, and we are not being insensitive to people's issues and problems, but it's becoming, like our neighborhood is more business occupied than resident occupied. I know the latest one that I'm familiar with, it was bought and purchased cash deal, you know, between the owner of the group home next door, you know, when we as residents, you know, we had another resident that wanted to move back, they would make no contact because the group home was offering them a great cash deal, no putting the house on the market, those type of things. So this has become a big concern, whereas other subs are coming to our meetings voicing their concern. So how will this be, how can this be addressed to residents, and then, and also, you know, to the city in general?
So we do have, we do have some information on the city's website, under the residents section, that talks about group homes. Unfortunately, last I heard, or from my understanding, the group homes, it's something that's regulated by the state, and the city has no say in where, if they buy a home, if they turn it into a group home. I don't believe that there's any type of restrictions on how many there could be either, but that's something we can continue to look into, and if we need to, we can always address it with our state representatives who are here this evening.
We would really appreciate that because residents are feeling overrun with, you know, these businesses popping up, and there's so much activity, you know, at the end of my street, there's three of them, and that's all they do, is just all day, all day, all day. And, you know, we have children riding bikes. We don't know what issues are at hand, you know. There was a guy who would do long work, which was fine, but you kind of want to pull your kids close when, you know, folks that you don't really know about, or you may think about, you know, not, there's something being, you know, maybe a little bit of an issue. So we would appreciate that, and I would appreciate a little bit of follow-up because I do have to address the residents in my association and neighboring associations because it has been, it's always come up, it keeps coming up and coming up, and as of late, you know, I have people calling me daily, and I happen to know the neighbor on the corner that called me while the argument was going on, and it took an hour for the police to get there, you know. So that was, you know, troubling as well.
Okay.
Ms. Chip?
Yes.
Since I've been on council, and that's eight years now, group home, that has come up frequently, and we, the answer we've given, obviously, every time, has been, it's a state, we have really no say so in where they are and where they are placed. But seeing that we have two representatives here from the state, I would like for us to get a statement from the, a department that place group homes, what the parameters are for placing those homes in various communities, because there has to be a procedure or something that's generically available to all citizens, and I haven't seen it as of now. So on a going-forward basis, if we can get a statement from the authorizing authority in the state of Michigan, what's the parameters for the placement of group homes in the city of Southfield, or any other community in the state of Michigan?
I would appreciate that.
And I'll just read from the city's website, under the residents, it has housing and property group homes. A group home is a private residence for children or young people who cannot live with their families, or people with chronic disabilities who may be adults or seniors. Typically, there are no more than six residents, and there is at least one trained caregiver there 24 hours a day. Group homes of any kind are regulated by the state of Michigan. State law permits group homes servicing six or fewer residents to be located within any residential neighborhood without specific approval from the respective city. The Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs licenses and regulates group homes throughout the state, and then there's a link to the website. There's also a complaint form that will take you to code enforcement for any type of code violations, and then it repeats that if you have safety concerns, to contact the police department.
Right, so I did read that. So my question is, how does the city feel about the state just saying, hey, whatever? If we approve it, you go with it?
May I speak?
Yes.
Good evening, good to see you, neighbor.
Good evening.
The thing that we've done in the past to remediate a troublesome group home is to document and report it to the licensing agency, which is Department of Social Services, and that has helped close down a troublesome group home. Earlier this year, we had a meeting with our state reps, and one of the things I asked them, we have, last count I had, we had 62 group homes in the city of Southfield. In my personal opinion, that's too many. And I asked that, you know, the state originally had distances, and this is under John Angler when he was governor. He's the one that closed the hospitals and went to community of mental health. And then they erased the distances. And what this is, is putting businesses in neighborhoods. You're quite correct. So I feel the law should be amended to a per capita. In other words, a city of 40,000 should have a max of, you know, a limit of so many group homes. We're 80,000 approximately. Right now, we have too many. And I appreciate your statement. I'm pro-people, too. These people are in these homes, most of them for the kind of care that a family can or can't afford. But what's the saturation point, is my question? And I think that this is something the legislature needs to revisit. The reason that you see so many group homes in a city like Southfield is because housing prices are lower here, and we have a lot of bigger homes. And so when you're talking about having six clients or residents in a home, we're sort of prime or ripe for this situation.
Correct. I have 18 at my corner, if that would be an estimate.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah.
No argument here.
So I think you're hearing me.
So our state senator and one of our state representatives is here.
Okay, and we don't want to appear to be insensitive.
It's got to be a state solution. It's not something the city of Southfield can regulate or zone.
Yet.
It's got to be a state solution.
Yet, yet, yet. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Next is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening to our mayor, to our city council, our attorney and city administrator, our clerk, and all the other city staff and the people in the audience. I wanted to compliment the city on years ago, before we had an aging popularity, that they were proactive to move around and do a lot of ADA adjustments. And I think we've done a really good job, but we still have a few more things that we could do because the population is aging. Forty years ago, I was a young person, and now I'm a little older, and I'm getting to that point, and hopefully, I won't have to be so specific with it, but I just hope that you continue to do the job that you're doing, to look at every aspect of the city and see where we can make those ADA modifications. And I wanted to thank you guys for all the dialogue that you had, going back and forth. You know, every year, when it's time for the Community Development Block Grant, I'm going to stand at this podium before this council and the mayor and ask for more money for Haven, because you know that I've been very passionate about Haven, and I have supported Haven for many, many years, and they do a great job, and a lot of the recipients are from Oakland County. And I'm going to ask you something else. So we know we have this recovery money, and I'm just wondering, since you know that I love Haven and Lighthouse so much, if we can find a few more dollars to give Haven and to give the Lighthouse, and maybe get it up to the $11,000 that Farmington Hills and some of the other communities give. If you could do that, it would warm my heart. I'm already loyal to this city and have 40 years invested, and it will continue, but I just hope that we can find a little bit more money to give Haven, because they are the largest domestic vi... that point. And hopefully I won't have to be so specific with it, but I just hope that you continue to do the job that you're doing, to look at every aspect of the city and see where we can make those ADA modifications. And I wanted to thank you guys for all the dialogue that you had going back and forth. You know, every year when it's time for the Community Development Block Grant, I'm going to stand at this podium before this council and the mayor and ask for more money for Haven, because you know that I've been very passionate about Haven and I have supported Haven for many, many years. And they do a great job and a lot of the recipients are from Oakland County. And I'm going to ask you something else. So we know we have this recovery money and I'm just wondering, since you know that I love Haven and Lighthouse so much, if we can find a few more dollars to give Haven and to give the Lighthouse and maybe get it up to the $11,000 that Farmington Hills and some of the other communities give. If you could do that, it would warm my heart. I'm already loyal to this city and have 40 years invested and it will continue, but I just hope that we can find a little bit more money to give Haven because they are the largest domestic violence and sexual assault shelter in the state of Michigan. And we know from watching the news that domestic violence is on the rise. We know that it's no longer men abusing women that the tables have turned. It's women abusing men and doing the same dastardly things to men that men have been known to do to women and now children are involved. And also, if I could just finish up with this real quickly, I want to thank the Southfield Police Chief and the Farmington Hills Police Chief for collaborating with me to put the message out there about stopping for school buses. I have given this speech for over 30 years saying, when the lights are red, the pedals are out, you have to stop completely. When the lights are yellow, caution, be prepared to stop and slow down. Keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communications for this evening. Next we have presentations and first up is our presentation from our elected state officials. Former city council members as well.
Well, good evening, council, mayor, administration. It is good to be back here in the Southfield City Council Chamber along with my colleague here, Senator Jeremy Moss. I am now State Representative Jason Hoskins. One half, I'm here with Senator Moss and we are one half of now, the now Southfield delegation, which is also comprised of State Representative Samantha Steckloff, who actually couldn't be with us because at about seven o'clock tonight, we have a meeting where we're going to be discussing the budget because it's, we're going to be doing stuff with the budget this week in the legislature, so she's actually doing a presentation on that, so she couldn't join us, as well as State Representative Natalie Price, who also is doing stuff with the budget as well. So you got two people and Representative Steckloff and Representative Price who work on budget stuff and then you have Senator Moss and I who do policy. And that is the bulk of what we've been doing so far in the legislature. I've been lucky enough to be appointed to five committees in the legislature. I serve on the Committee on Local Government, you know, naturally, using my experience here on the Southfield City Council, also the Committee on Judiciary, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, because those were a lot of conversations that we had about infrastructure, certainly when I was on council here. And the Committee on Ethics and Oversight and I am chairing the Committee on Economic Development and Small Business. And that is one of the committees that I'm very happy to be serving on there. In fact, we've had a very busy, certainly had a very busy hundred days, which I know Senator Moss is going to talk more about, but now that we've gotten past that, I am actually focusing a lot more on economic development here in the state and really reimagining what economic development actually looks like here in Michigan. And certainly going to be relying on a lot of the people who I've worked with here in the city to really see what that can look like going forward. We've been able to do so many great things. Just getting started, I want to just highlight one of the, the first thing, actually the very first thing that we did in Lansing, we did a supplemental budget where we were able to approve millions of dollars. I just want to point out that there was millions of dollars actually for Smart Zone, which helped benefit, of course, for Smart Zones in the state, but of course, we have our Smart Zone here at Lawrence Tech, as well as millions of dollars in housing, as well as for helping small businesses here in the state. A lot of great things that we are hoping to continue in this next budget, in this next budget cycle going forward. I'm going to turn it over now to Senator Moss because he's going to talk about some of the other big policy things that we've been working on in Lansing.
Thank you, Representative. Good evening, council, mayor, administration. It's, it's good to be back here. So I guess maybe I'll first start off by saying I have a new district that still includes the entirety of the city of Southfield. So while Southfield got sliced up into a few pieces in the redistricting for the State House and Representative Hoskins has the southern end of the city and Representative Steckloff has the northern end of the city and then there's a northeast corner in Representative Price's district, I, there's some continuity in the state senate and I'm glad that they didn't chop up Southfield and I, I still have the entirety of the city in our district. And I also represent neighborhoods in northwest Detroit, just south of Southfield, and I head north through Southfield Township, Bloomfield, Pontiac and surrounding areas. So I now went from this 696 corridor to this Telegraph corridor of, of metro Detroit. I also, on day one of our, of our legislative session back on January 11th, I was elected unanimously by our colleagues on both sides of the aisle to serve as President Pro Tem of the state senate. So our, thank you. I'm excited about it. And the president of the senate is our Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist. So as the two of you know, and when the president of the senate is not there and he's a busy guy, I preside over the proceedings on the floor of the state senate. Very excited about that. Honestly, to have Representative Hoskins with his legislative experience, serving in, in my office as my legislative director and to have, you know, a voice in the senate from Southfield and leadership in the senate, I can assure you, Southfield has an oversized voice in the legislature. And as you know, the dynamics of the legislature now are a majority in the Democratic Party favor. So many of the items that we've been pushing forward for 40 years, when we were not in control of the Michigan senate, we've been able to get done just within our first quarter as Representative Hoskins mentioned. So, you know, I'm a lifelong Southfield resident and Representative Hoskins calls this city his home as well. So for the Southfielders listening, we are there, we are at the table and on issues from the community, let us know because we have a lot more ability to push forward the issues that directly impact us back home with the dynamics of who's in leadership and which party's in control. To that end, on day one of our legislative session, we introduced about six bills outlining our priority. Those include tax relief. We repealed the unpopular retirement tax here in the state of Michigan. We restored, I got a whole applause section behind me. We restored the working families' tax credit that was slashed a decade ago. We pushed forward on issues of personal freedom. We've repealed that archaic 1931 abortion felony. We took the lead from the city of Southfield, which a decade ago put LGBTQ rights in our city's human rights ordinance and we put it, the same rights in our existing Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. Those were bills that we sponsored that finally got signed into law. We pushed forward on labor practices that support working families here in the state of Michigan, including repealing right to work here in the state of Michigan and restoring prevailing wage. So those were our first six bills, all of them got signed into law. Then we endured another horrific tragedy, gun violence here in the state of Michigan at MSU. Back in 2016, when I was a state representative, I helped to establish our Gun Violence Prevention Caucus in the Michigan Legislature. We put forward solutions then to reduce gun deaths and injuries all around our state and put forward proven measures that other states have to tackle on these crises. And from Oxford here in Oakland County to MSU and everyday gun violence that, that plagues our neighborhoods throughout the state of Michigan, we've not been able to get any of these bills moving until the new gun safety majority came into place. So we passed forward three significant bills through the process. Number one is a bill package that I'm a sponsor of to strengthen and expand background checks here in the state. Number two was to require safe storage of firearms that have, that are in homes with minors living in them. And number three was to institute an extreme risk protection order as other states have. So if somebody is suffering a crisis and, and makes threatening actions against others or themselves, there is now a process, a due process through the court system to separate that person from their firearm so that they can't act upon those threats and that they can get the help that they need. This is landmark legislation. We haven't passed gun safety legislation here in decades and whereas we're seeing tragedies play out across the country in Michigan here, we are taking action. Another thing that, that I can mention that I know that the city, city will benefit from is I'm chair of our municipal caucus in the legislature. It's a caucus of former city council members, both sides of the aisle. So there are four chairs, two of us are Democrats, two of us are Republicans, pushing forward on issues that matter most to local communities. Representative Hoskins is a member in good standing in our caucus and one of the first bills that I introduced along with our caucus co-chairs is what we're calling a revenue-sharing trust fund. Now I was on this city council right here when we watched Lansing balance its books on the backs of local communities. We had to get our budget here done on July 1st and we were unknowing of what the funding was coming from the state. That's taxpayer dollars that you and I paid to Lansing. There's an expectation that it's supposed to come home and they were slashing it year after year to plug other holes in the state budget. And, you know, it accelerated crises in other communities. I think you can draw a direct line between slashing revenue sharing and emergency management and then the problems with emergency management elsewhere in our communities. In Southfield, we have stretched that dollar as far as we can and we finally are now heading in the right direction. What our legislation would do, would it would basically put revenue sharing in a lockbox. As we go through the budget process, there, we want funds that are untouched for other purposes and secure for revenue sharing, setting the rate and that it cannot be rated for other purposes, so that you can provide for the essential services that our residents here depend upon. I see Fred is just like, you know, couldn't be more excited about this. So we are in talks right now with my colleagues in leadership on getting the trust fund passed, getting the rate of revenue sharing set and so we can have a predictable stream of revenue for cities that need to budget and need that expectation of what's coming from the state. So I'm working very closely with the Michigan Municipal League. I know that Southfield's a, a, a strong partner, a strong affiliate with the Michigan Municipal League, so that's important to me. It was, it was both of our charges. I mean, we cut our teeth here on the city council and, and really know what an excellent job this city does to administer a local budget that provides for, for residents back home. Our task is to connect those dots between what cities need. I'd be remiss and probably kicked in the behind if I didn't mention I am working with Ms. Gerald, who isn't even here for this. I'm working with her on a bill that she flagged for me dealing with credit unions. So that just goes to say, if you have bill ideas or policy proposals or issues with the state, contact our offices. We sent a mailer out from my office earlier this year with my contact information and, and some of our priorities here and especially when it comes to group homes, I'll tackle that. The state is the organization, the, the LARA Department, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Agency, is the, is the governing agency over group homes and if you have a problem, let our office know and we can flag that because they're supposed to take these, these cases very seriously. And to institute more local control over these issues, let's follow up and see what we can do because this is a persistent discussion. I sat there when, when many constituents came with, with these issues and now we're in a, we're in a better position now to get some things done on that. So with that, I don't know that I take up your time, are you going to make your seven o'clock meeting? All right. We'll, we'll field questions from council.
Councilman Hoag?
Well, first, I just wanted to extend my congratulations to both of you. I've been a supporter of both of you for years and I'm very proud of the work that you're doing, so thank you for that. I'm glad that you were here today. We've had some great comments from the audience. I was speaking with Representative Hoskins before the meeting started and I talked about roads and the first resident got up here and said the exact same thing, the group homes and all of that. And so I know how sincere and passionate you guys are for the work that you do and I just ask that you seriously consider what you've heard here today, especially the groups' home and especially the roads, as I mentioned to you, state rep. But, and, and I know you're going to do it for us and, and I would love to hear you come back and have some changes for us relative to the group home. My one question is, on the trust fund that you mentioned, does it appear that you have support from the others on the other side of the aisle?
Yes, so the good news is, is that our caucus is bipartisan. There's a Republican co-chair in the senate, I'm the Democratic co-chair in the senate, a Republican co-chair in the house and a Democratic co-chair in the house. We had our first meeting, what, a week ago, a week or two ago, and this is the priority for this caucus. And there are enough members in the legislature who have come from local government who understand this and really have to tell the story to other of our colleagues who just did not have this local government experience. I was very passionate at that caucus meeting that this has to be a priority because I, I know what happens when revenue sharing is slashed. It, it impacts people, it impacts the services that local communities can provide. And so yes, there, there is support on this. I'm having conversations with my colleagues in leadership about how to get this done and even rethinking revenue sharing as we're going through this budget cycle and how we can maximize the support we give to our communities back home.
Well, thank you, I'm looking for, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just going to add, we are actually in a great position in the legislature because I think this is the most people we've ever had come from local government, serving in the legislature on both sides. And I think because of that, it makes it a lot easier when we're having these conversations about revenue sharing or we're talking about how we fund our roads in general. It's easy because you don't have to, quite frankly, you don't have to teach someone what revenue sharing is from that they already know.
Right.
And so we've been able to really, I think, really push forward on this conversation on how we can better, how we can do revenue sharing better because we have those voices who come from local government, including the people who represent Southfield. You know, Representative Steckloff, she was a city councilwoman in Farmington Hills and Representative Price was a councilwoman in Berkeley. So we have those, those local government voices at the table right now and they're really thinking about how can we help, how can we best help our local communities here in Michigan.
That's great.
I'll make one additional comment because, you know, revenue sharing sounds like government speak, you know? But what it is, is I remember when Jim Schreit was, was city administrator, he literally said, if we get more money from the state, it's going to roads and public safety. That's it. I mean, this is, these are essential services that the city provides and the more that the state provides and the less that the state cuts, the more it impacts our safety, our welfare. So when we talk about roads, the more that comes from the state, I know where the city's priorities are. It's, it's to the residents, it's to the neighborhoods and we're trying to keep making sure that, that those dollars are not slashed and actually increased.
Well, good, I'm looking forward to hearing more from that caucus.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, it's good to see both of you. It seems like old times to talk with you and I listen to NPR an awful lot and I hear Senator Moss on NPR quite a bit. You seem to be one of their favorite people to interview and so, and I hear good things. Same thing with Representative Jason. One of the things that I'm concerned about is water quality. And just recently, I understand the federal government said that septic tank systems need to be checked every five years. I know in Michigan, we have probably more septic tank systems than a lot of the state, other states in the country do have. But I'm concerned that, we used to have people that checked septic tanks 10, 12, 15 years ago and somehow or another got lost in the weeds. I just want to make sure that you keep an eye out for whatever you can do to bring that to light again because it's pretty insidious how a septic tank can sour the underground system, water system and make it difficult for people to have clean water to drink. But I want to, I want to make sure that the people do have good water to drink. And today I was listening to what's going out in the southwest and Colorado River and how they're making people tear up their lawns, cut down on the businesses that have fountains because they're wasting water and it's a serious thing that they're making decisions between whether farmers can grow crops or people can drink water. And I just don't want us to sour our water supply here in Michigan so that we have to make some hard decisions. make some hard decisions. And I'd like you to keep your eyes open and do what you can to make sure that we're ahead of the game.
You know, and that's a good point. And that is actually something we're definitely taking a look at. I know in the House, I'm not sure if it was introduced in the Senate, but in the House, we've actually introduced legislation to create a statewide septic code. And so that we are applying the rules universally throughout the state. So those issues of people, you know, I know when I was on the council and even before that, there were issues with people not even knowing they had a septic system in their house. And so creating a universal set of rules that we can all apply across the state is something we think is very important. We're actually the only state in the country that doesn't have a statewide septic code. And this is something, I know I talked to our Water Resource Commissioner here in Oakland County, Jim Nash, and it's something he is very happy that the state is starting to look at and hopefully follow through on. But it's, you're right. I mean, protecting our water is something that's going to be very critical, especially as time goes on. As you mentioned, in the west, in the west part, western part of the country and in the southwest, they are having issues with water insecurity. And they are very much looking at Michigan and trying to find ways to get our water down there. I would say you should come, come to Michigan. We have everything, everything we can offer down there. Just come on here because I think there's going to be a fight going forward and we're going to have to really work hard to protect our water here in Michigan. I see stories every now and again about ways that other states can get the water from Michigan down to their state. And we have been fighting that off pretty hard. But it's going to get worse as time goes on, especially if we're not doing everything that we can to address climate crisis and all those things too.
And I'll make an additional note. Again, you know, this new majority acting in a different way than the previous majority. In lame duck of 2018, the Republican majority passed a bill that prohibits agencies from making stricter rules than the federal government. And that was signed into law. That includes water quality, buildings, construction regulations across the board. There's a bill that's moving through the Senate right now to repeal that, to allow Michigan to have the strongest laws in the nation with regards to regulations that protect our health, safety and welfare. And that would include water quality. So that bill's moving through the process so that Michigan can be a leader on this front rather than having a ceiling that whatever the federal government does, we can't exceed.
Okay. I'd like to make one last pitch on water. And that is, you had mentioned that people are trying to find a way to steal our water and take it to the southwest. Well, there's the opposite side of it and that is people moving to Michigan and putting up businesses that use our water and sell it. And it seems like we're almost giving away our water to the people that sell water in the grocery store. They get it for almost nothing and sell it for a high price. Maybe they ought to, maybe it would be nice to have, you guys take a look at it and have them pay the price that they should be paying for it if they're going to sell it back to us.
Yeah. That Nestle deal that went through?
Yes.
When I was, that was a DEQ issued permit at the same time that they issued the oil drilling permit here in Southfield. So the department is completely restructured and retooled since then. But yeah, we want those safeguards in to protect, I mean, one of our biggest assets and resources here, unique to Michigan, that residents here should be able to enjoy rather than to see it go elsewhere to be profited by others.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I definitely appreciate, two familiar faces. And it was, well, music to my ears when you indicated that Southfield has people at the table. And there's a, there's a political phrase that's become kind of popular now that if you're not at the table, you're possibly on the menu. So I'm glad to know that you guys on the table so that the menu item with respect to Southfield is limited or nonexistent. The, I have a couple items. One is the, the issue with the young lady who brought the phone about group homes. And as I mentioned, every year that I've been on council, that item has come up at least once or twice. And if you can get some, something explained to us, the equity of distributing these homes around the state of Michigan and or distributions to a certain community and why, and I don't know, because we're not aware of the population all around the state. Well, now, we are overly populated here in the state, in the city of Southfield. So an answer to that might go a long ways to answering the various citizens that come up periodically about group homes. And all of us care about the health and safety and the maturity and the, of our fellow man here in the city of Southfield. We don't want to deny anyone the opportunity to, to live a peaceful life. But, you know, when there's an abundance and then that abundance is creating disturbances for the community, we have to, as a council, we have to explain that. And so right now, we don't have any answer other than the fact, that's the state, state doing that. So I would definitely appreciate that going the road. The other item, which is kind of, since my background is financing and everything I do is kind of centered around financing, since I've been on council, the constant word is Michigan has always been last in revenue sharing. I've seen charts. You start with, you can just start at the alphabet, A to Z, but Michigan always go behind Z in its, is the last state in the union with respect to revenue share. Has, and I haven't seen a new chart, but is there current day calculation with respect to, have we, are we creeping up in revenue sharing or is that to be determined?
So you're absolutely right. There's a chart that has an access and there's every state on it, this is produced by the Michigan Municipal League. And every state on it, it talks about or measures how the state funds the local communities. On the far end of the access, high, you know, whatever state funds it a lot. And it goes down and down and down. And then on the tail end of the access here, under it is the state of Michigan because we were unique in that we were defunding our communities over the course of 20 years from like, you know, 2022 or 2002 and onward. Over the last several years, we've certainly headed in the right direction. Across the board, we've restored the cuts that when Governor Snyder came into office, across the board, cut, cut state government spending. And those harsh cuts have been restored. The, the last remaining factor that hasn't caught up to pre-2010 and even before levels is revenue sharing. So we've headed in the right direction, but in many regards, we're not where we were a decade ago or even 20 years ago. So that's what the whole point of this revenue sharing trust fund is. Number one, set the policy that there is going to be a lockbox. Number two, set the rate and even hook it up so that it can increase year after year after year. So that is our charge. That's what makes communities healthy and successful. And again, you know, when you have Flint and you have a water crisis that was accelerated by an emergency manager, which was propelled by a city that was defunded from the state, there's a reason why Flint sticks out as just this horrific example is because Michigan was unique in defunding our communities. And so that's the whole crux of why this is so important to me, us and as Southfielders, to make sure that our city government can, can operate in the black and make sure that, you know, we're providing these major sources of resources to our residents.
Very. And one final thing, this is, it's been the issue before, even before I got on council and it just, it was in the news about governors from the southwest trying to figure out how to get water from the Great Lakes states. So that's been around for quite a while and I guess now it's just beginning to be crystallized from a newsword standpoint. So now it comes out on the news on a regular basis. So as you all indicated, the two of you indicated, that is something that you are aware of and I appreciate your, obviously being at the table for the state of Michigan to make sure we don't have a pipeline going straight to Arizona or something, you know, sacking water out of the, one of the Great Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. I'd like to thank both of you for the great work you're doing up in Lansing. I couldn't believe the first 90 days passing all six bills.
Neither could we.
Wow. I'm like, keep on going. Last year, the voters approved early voting in the state of Michigan. And I guess I've got two questions. Number one, which election will early voting start? And number two, I've read various articles, and I'm bringing this up because we're going to be reviewing our budget. I've read they will not be assisting local municipalities. And then I read they may be assisting. So can you shed a little bit of light on it? If, and if you don't know, you can get back.
I do know. So one of the leadership roles that I also have is I'm chairman of the Elections and Ethics Committee. As you know, your time as a city clerk here and councilwoman, how passionate I am about our democracy and our elections and upholding the integrity of our elections and not chasing after phantom voter fraud, but actually making sure that the system remains strong and secure. And so, yes, as the voters passed in 2022, proposal two, with 60% of the vote, and I point out to folks, you don't get to 60% of the vote with Democrats alone. That's Democrats, Republicans and independents who came together and said, we want more access to our ballots. We want less barriers to voting. One of the measures that came out of there is nine days of early voting. What our task is in the legislature, and I'm on, I'm on three-hour workgroups every Monday. I was on one today where I'm, I am leading with the Michigan Municipal Clerks Association, the Michigan County Clerks Association, promote the vote, who wrote the ballot proposal, and our Secretary of State to define what is nine days of early voting. You need direction. The early voting, according to the ballot proposal, only impacts statewide elections, but it certainly is a system by which the local community can choose to use. If you find that nine days of early voting works, which I think it would in our community, every election in the city of Southfield can utilize this. So our goal, our next statewide election is the presidential primary next year, but our goal is to pass the parameters around early voting by this summer so that it can be ready to go by this August primary and November in general, should cities choose to use that. Now, what is early voting? You know, so you can vote absentee and vote by mail, you can vote in person on election day, but we would allow communities to set up early voting centers within their municipal boundaries so that you can walk in to a polling location in person nine days before the election and cast your ballot and it will be tabulated right then and there. It's not always convenient for somebody to walk into a poll in the, you know, in the middle of the day on a Tuesday. So it would look different than election day, does not require our 19 or so polling locations. We are determining on how many precincts or how many precincts can consolidate together. We are also allowing for flexibility should the city want to partner with the county, the county to have an early voting. You know, Southfield, we have a full-time clerk, full-time staff, full-time brick and mortar buildings. I'm learning in this role that there are one precinct townships with a part-time clerk who works out of their home and has no staff. So what, how are they going to vote for nine days in that community? So should a city choose to want to partner with the county or want to come up with a partnering agreement with another community, they have the ability to do so. So we're giving a lot of options on the menu, to use a menu, another menu analogy. So Southfield would be able to partner with other communities, Southfield would be able to partner with the county, or Southfield would be able to identify locations within our municipal boundaries so that the clerk can lead early in-person voting. As term, in terms of funding, boy, has that skyrocketed. At first, the recommendation was $20 million to get everything all set and then it has now gone up to $177 million. So we, those are numbers that came from the Secretary of State because each community's going to be different. You know, some communities will bear zero cost because they're going to field it out to the county. Some communities will field half the cost because, you know, if Southfield wants to partner with Farmington Hills, that would, that would reduce the cost. Some communities want to have more centralized control over our elections. So we're looking at this $177 million figure for all of Prop 2 implementation. That includes enshrining our drop-off boxes. That includes we're creating a ballot tracking system from the Secretary of State so that when you submit your ballot, you know where it is, you know when it's counted, you know when it's tabulated. That's all coming out of the proposal. So some of the costs, both one-time only costs and ongoing costs for at least this budget year, we're looking at $177 million and we're going through the budget process now to ensure that that's, that's in place. I will keep you posted as we go through that. But I personally, and we've talked, I'm very excited about my role as chair of the Elections and Ethics Committee. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that our elections continue to be secure, run smoothly here in the Michigan, in Michigan and that every voter has the opportunity to have their voice heard. So there will be a third option for voting here.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations again and welcome home. You're always welcome home as far as I'm concerned and we really appreciate you taking the time to be here. I did have an opportunity to speak with the other two reps as well and they are very excited. I know that Southfield is, I'm going to use a term that we learned at MML for the Michigan CapCon conference, maximizing the moment. And that is the slogan that's going around the whole state of Michigan. We have a three for the Senate, the House and the governor's seat. And we're maximizing that and Southfield is being mentioned, is recognized and hopefully we will continue that, but we're going to maximize the moment while we have it right now. Along with the water, it's very interesting because that is a very, very hot topic right now. So in addition to the bills and stuff that's going, I know also because of having this representation that we have, funding is coming along with that because water has some of the oldest equipment. And speaking of the infrastructure, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Jim Nash this weekend and he is very concerned about the water and different things that's going on. And we had a nice, long conversation. So I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing and continue not only passing bills, but including that funding so that we can keep up the machines and the, the infrastructure, all of the technology because it's just growing. That was one of the areas they were saying if there was some kind of an attack or something, the water would be one of the places. So they, it's being looked at very closely. So it's just good to hear that we have great representation speaking on our behalf at the state. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a lot of Southfield pride and the people who live here have a lot of Southfield pride. And our city is well-run, our residents are strong, our neighborhoods are strong. And, and, you know, this isn't about me, but this is about this, don't tell the other cities that I represent this, but this is about this city. This city is, has, it has a seat at the table. This city has a lot of influence in the direction of the state of Michigan. We, in many regards, are a model here for everything, including our diversity, including our neighborliness, including our roads and our amenities and our services. And, you know, you have two members who worked at that collaboratively with all of you to make our city strong and we're taking that experience to have the rest of the state enjoy it. So we really should be proud of ourselves here.
And we're proud of you too.
Yeah, thanks.
Our city clerk?
Thank you for letting me speak. One of the things that I have been passionate about for a long time in my career and as a part of the Municipal League's Finance Committee in a former life is revenue sharing. And so I can go on a rant about it for quite some time, but I won't bore you. What I do want to recommend is that, is that you enshrine, that you make efforts after you do this trust initiative, that you make some effort to legislative initiative that will enshrine it in our constitution. Because what I concern myself with is when we have a surplus, when the state has a surplus, the revenue sharing is not cut as bad. But when things get funky, then that's when revenue sharing somehow is subject to the manipulations of whatever group is in power at that time and you never know who that's going to be. So one of the things that I think it's important is that, that be taken off the table. So one of the things that I think it's important is that, that be taken off the table so that that's not the pocket that you go to when you're trying to balance your budget, that the cities have a guaranteed function. And I know you guys all know the history of revenue sharing. But it's meant to prevent cities from having income tax and their own sales tax and this tax and that tax. And that, that all be collaborated into one. So it was never meant to be the state's money. It was always meant to be the municipality's money. And I know you guys all heard this.
We're going to bring you up to Lansing. When this, when this, when this bill goes forward, I need you to testify.
I, I, I really just want you to consider how we can take advantage of the moment, as, as Councilmember Taylor said, and get that enshrined in our constitution and get those entities that are afraid that they won't get as much revenue sharing if we do that to the table so we can come up with a compromise that works for everyone.
Amen.
And so, all right, subject two. My other passion is a smaller one, and I think it's even an easier one. One of the things that we talk about is the, one of the stories that I tell is that on my very first day here, I had a constituent come up and say, crying, that their taxes had gone up because of Proposal A and the statute that uncaps your taxable value. Whatever my argument might be in regard to Proposal A and how it works, it is the law and that is how it works. And so I'm interested in any legislation that will make it mandatory, a kind of truth in taxation, only property taxation this time, truth in taxation that will say realtors and mortgage companies and other financiers, you must tell them what their taxes are going to be and how that incorporates into their escrow payment and all of those things. So people aren't caught off guard. And that doesn't just work for the individual. It also works for the communities because the communities then don't have people who really can't afford their homes, then have to abandon their homes. And it feeds into blight and foreclosure and other ugly things that we can avoid if you simply get the house that you can afford. So I would love that.
I would love that, too. Because it is something that is certainly, I mean, I've heard it for years. People not realizing that when they buy their house, they, they're enjoying their first year of homeownership. And then they get their tax bill, and they thought their taxes were going to be at one level, and it is not what they thought. It's a lot higher. And that is definitely something I've actually been talking with, with mortgage, with banks about something where it lets people know what your taxes are going to be in the front end. Because it, it, the banks, realtors as well, because they don't want you to lose your home. It only hurts them in the, in the long run. And I know some of the banks that I've been talking to have been very receptive to the idea of having something on the front end, letting people know like, hey, here's what your taxes could potentially be next year. But that's only a kind of a symptom of a bigger problem, dealing with both Prop A and Headley and, and trying to address the much bigger issue. And I know as we're talking about, we're having the revenue sharing conversation. We are also having that conversation, too, potentially looking at Prop A and how we can maybe do that better as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just lastly, just to tack on to what Councilmember Banks was saying, Oakland County has been kind of prepping and the state has been kind of prepping as Senator Moss indicated in returns of early voting. And so as clerk, I have indicated that, that right now in the survey mode of who's interested in doing early voting. And so I volunteered our city as somebody who is certainly interested in, in, in making sure that that happens. Any opportunity for more people to vote is always a good thing, even if they are not on my side of whatever table you happen to come up with. I want you to vote. In, in my former life, one of the things that I encouraged is a one-hundred percent voter turnout. I know people think that that's ridiculous, but I mean it. If Southfield is the first city in the entire world that has a hundred percent turnout, well, then just good for us. And so if early voting motivates that, though, I am a little scared that it's almost August and we don't have a place in place, a, a plan in place. So I'll be looking forward to hearing what you guys are coming up with because as soon as we can get that done, the better.
Yeah, and again, the, the ballot proposal requires it for statewide elections. What we want to do is have the framework in place so that you have a guide on how it can work, how it can run, so that ahead of our presidential primary next, next late winter, the, the system will run as smoothly as possible. So there, the requirement for us is to get it done by next year. We want to get it done for you this year.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, thank you for taking the time, probably more time than you anticipated to be here.
I'd give you all night.
I can't, I haven't.
We definitely appreciate the time. And, and the one request that I was going to make, our clerk just took it about the assessing information. Because I know I also, I get many phone calls that first year. And especially, it hurts the most when you buy a house from a longtime homeowner whose taxes were very low. And then that new person, their taxes more than double sometimes. So I know that it's something that I believe Senator Moss was, when he was on council, would talk to our city couns, our city assessor about, as well as our city treasurer, trying to figure out how to make that work. So again, I appreciate your time. Mr. Mayor, did you have any final words?
Well, to the, to the clerk, as I recall it, years ago, the state said, oh, we'll help you with this. We'll, we'll consolidate so you don't have to, we'll take the burden off you. And of course, that got very twisted. You're quite correct. Now, these, these gentlemen know me well, and they know with me, my number-one mantra is we need money for local neighborhood streets. We get a lot of grant money for major roads. But, and, and this is a problem, it's not Southfield's problem. I can go to any community around here and drive through a neighborhood and see the potholes and the, and the crumbling streets. And they're just, Act Fifty-One is not working. It's getting worse with electric vehicles as far as gas revenue side of things. So I'd either like to see a new road funding formula, but definitely we need more money for local roads. And I know that speaking earlier today with one of your colleagues, District Twenty-Six, I think, Moran?
Yeah, Representative Morgan.
Yeah, Morgan, has introduced a bill specifically for local streets.
Yep, he has, in the budget, he requested five hundred million dollars for local roads specifically. I think fifty million of that would go to Oakland County. And so we're, and we're in the beginning of the budget process right now. I thi, I know it's in the House version of the budget. But as we vote out our budgets this week in the House, and then eventually in the Senate, they'll go to a conference committee, and then we'll try to put them together. We'll, we'll see what, we'll see what magic is made there, but.
Well, and I'm grateful for that, and I, I know you'll support it. But when you talk about fifty million to Oakland County, and you got, what, thirty-some municipalities in the county? And we just got, thanks to Senator Moss, we got three million dollars. And we can do maybe one and a half streets. Because the cost of road construction has gone through the roof. So.
You talk about Act Fifty-One, and it is literally the Act Fifty-One of nineteen fifty-one. That's the road funding formula. And essentially, you are right, it is two buckets, two major buckets. One is the gas tax and one is registration. And literally, at the end, when these buckets are all filled up together, it's divided by eighty-three, and eighty-three different counties enjoy the same amount of the formula. Well, there's a lot more drivers paying registration out of Oakland County and Macomb County and Wayne County and, and, and Washtenaw County that's going to counties that don't have a lot of drivers. Another element of the formula is that it, it accounts for miles, but not width. You know, you can look out, just think of, you know, where Evergreen Road has grown and grown and grown over the years. Actually, we shrunk it when I was on council. But the point remains, you know, we're a developed city. And we have more drivers and more lanes that should be accounted for in this formula than, you know, a, a one-stoplight town far, far away from us. So you're right, and this is something we bounced around. It would have to be a ballot initiative. It could be a ballot initiative. We could, we could resolve it. But there was discussion a few years ago about making it a ballot initiative. But yeah, you know, Act Fifty-One of nineteen fifty-one is certainly overdue for, for a reexamination.
City Administrator, did you have any comments?
I, I'd like to just thank the state rep and the state senator for their availability. Talked to them frequently. Roads is a constant issue, issues councils hit. We talk about courts funding, parks and rec. I'm grateful for their, their evaluation. I know you're both good ears. The Michigan Municipal League, folks of the township, the county folks speak highly of both of you. We're so incredibly fortunate to have legislators who have that local experience. And without that legislative, they're both well-accomplished individuals, and we're very fortunate. So I'm grateful for that, and we'll continue to work with them. Thank you. I'm happy to pick up the money at any time.
Well, thank you both for, for being here, and we hope, we hope to see you more often.
You got it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our presentation of a joint resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month.
Yes. The resolution for the Jewish American Heritage Month was requested, and we put it together, it's a joint resolution from mayor and council. And it reads as follows. The joint resolution in recognition of the Jewish American Heritage Month, whereas Jewish American Heritage Month originated in nineteen eighty when Congress passed a resolution which authorized and requested the president to issue a proclamation designating April twenty-first through the twenty-eighth of nineteen eighty as Jewish Heritage Week. And whereas on April twentieth, two thousand and six, President George Bush proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month. And since two thousand and seven, the White House has issued a proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month. And whereas Jewish American Month is an opportunity to celebrate Jewish Americans and encourage all to learn more about Jewish heritage in the United States through educational programming activities and ceremonies. And whereas the American Jewish community has grown to over six million, representing approximately two percent of the American population today. And whereas Jewish Americans past and present serve in government and the military, win Nobel Prizes, head universities and cooperations, corporations, I'm sorry, advance medicine, create enduring works of visual and performance art, write great, great American novels, and so much more. And whereas the city of Southfield remains committed to supporting its Jewish American residents and to condemning all forms of religious discrimination. And whereas we must each do our part to put an end to antisemitism and hatred and, and create a culture of respect in our workplaces, schools, and homes, and across social media. And whereas this Jewish American Heritage Month let us join hands across faiths, races, and backgrounds to make clear that evil, hate, antisemitism will not prevail in Southfield. Let us honor the timeless values, contributions, and culture of Jewish, and let us rededicate ourselves to the sacred work of creating a more inclusive tomorrow, protecting the diversity that defines who we are as a city and a nation, preserving the dignity of every human being here at home and around the world. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Southfield, Michigan. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the resolution as presented.
Thoreau? It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve the presentation of joint resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation of a joint resolution recognizing Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And again, this is a joint resolution for the, from the mayor and city council. Whereas the rich history and heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders is thousands of years old and is integral to the shaping of the history of the United States. And whereas the month-long observance recognizes the influence and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans to the achievements and culture of the United States. And whereas the first documented arrival of Asians in America was in fifteen eighty-seven when Filipinos arrived in California. Additionally, evidence suggests that the first Japanese individual to arrive in North America was a young boy in October fifteen eighty-seven. It's believed he accompanied a Franciscan friar. And whereas the first Chinese arrived in Hawaii in seventeen seventy-eight, the first Koreans landed in the States in eighteen eighty-four. The first Samoans in the United States were documented in nineteen twenty in Hawaii, and the first Vietnamese in nineteen twelve. And whereas, according to Dr. Dawn Lee Too, faculty director at De'Anza College and former director of Asian Pacific American Student Development at UC Berkeley, she explains that the term "Asian American" was first used by student activists in nineteen sixty-eight to identify Asian groups during a time when Americans would use the derogatory term "oriental" to refer to Asians in the United States. And whereas in the nineteen seventies, a former congressional staffer, Jeannie Jew, proposed, proposed the idea of celebrating Asian Pacific Americans to Representative Frank Horton. In June nineteen seventy-seven, a United States House of Representatives resolution was introduced by Horton and Norman Mineta, proclaiming the first ten days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Week. A month later, a similar bill was introduced in the Senate. And whereas President Jimmy Carter made the then-week-long celebration official when he signed a joint resolution on October fifth, nineteen seventy-eight. In nineteen ninety, Asian Pacific Heritage Week was extended to a month when George H.W. Bush signed a bill passed by Congress designating May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas the month of May was chosen because it commemorates the migration of the first immigrants from Japan to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three, and to celebrate the completion of the transcontinental railroad by over twenty thousand Asian immigrants on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Ms. Frasier?
Yes.
I move that we approve and accept this joint resolution in recognition of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
Thoreau? It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Frazier, to accept and approve the presentation of joint resolution recognizing Asian, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we have our consent agenda. I would like to point out that Item C, the authorization for HVAC maintenance, is being pulled and needs some additional research. Counsel, did you have any other items that you would like to have pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is purely for discussion. I want to pull Item B.
Okay. B for boy.
B for boy is in Bravel.
Okay. Any other items that, anyone, Councilman Banks?
Item J and Item M.
Okay. Counsel, any other items? All right, so why don't we take these, and then we'll do all the items together. Item B, our fire chief is here. Item B, um, our fire chief is here, this is the authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department?
Chief, this is a very simple question, but, um, didn't we recently buy some fire hose within the last six months or so?
It wasn't six months, but yes, in the last two budget years, we did buy hose. Um, it has a 10-year life cycle and so it was due to be updated.
Oh, okay, so the, well, I was, I was thinking that, that, that amount of time had not passed since I saw this item.
Oh, no, I mean, we bought hose at different time, I mean, you know, with, um, you know, we have two things right now that's been happening with the hose, kind of like everything else that's been going on in our country. It's, um, the price has gone up with it and it's, and it's hard to, um, to get it, supply and demand with it. But what, what, when we have thousands of feet of, of hose in the department, and so what this is, is 17, 17 lengths of 50-foot lengths of inch and three-quarters, 16 lengths of two-and-a-half inch and six lengths of five-inch that are 35 feet long. So there are different types of hoses that we're, we're looking to buy. But even with that amount of hose does not, um, does not outfit a, even one inch. So that's about, I mean, like I said, we have, you know, hundreds of feet of hose that's on, on these, uh, on our fire trucks.
Okay, all right, now, 'cause I, I just recall that when we replaced the last batch of hoses that we purchased, it was stated that the replacing hose would be used for training. So that was old hose that would be used for training or whatever. So are we just replacing our stock now because of the price and the availability? And is stocking up primarily?
No, sir, um, you know, I have a, um, I have a, a life cycle that I go through, just like we do with, um, with our vehicles. And so the, the life cycle of the hose is, is, is at its, its maximum date, you know? So we have to, we have to replace it. And we do use the old hose, um, for training.
Right.
Um, we, we actually give some to, um, our sheriff departments that they use it as, as buffers on the side of, um, the docks and so forth for that. So there's, there's other things that we use the hose for, um, once, once it reaches its life cycle.
Okay, all right, now, it's, I, I clearly see a need for, and it would, it wouldn't make sense to have a fire department with no hose, so, uh, I, I clearly didn't see the need for, but I just.
With 10 years, I mean, it's a 10-year life cycle.
Yeah, it was just to continue with seeing this item. And, uh, so, okay, um, I definitely approve all the hose that you need.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, Councilman Banks, you had a question on item J, receipt of bids for tree planting?
Correct.
And we have Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening.
Um, with reference to this program, I know this is probably just on city property or throughout, I mean, I'm assuming it's on city property.
Yeah, these are replacements of trees that were knocked down during the storms two, three years ago, or that were just recently knocked down. There is approximately about 30% of the trees will be going to homeowners. There'll be 27 trees spread throughout seven different parks and approximately 30 trees that'll go on the medians and the rest will be for the homeowners. Replace the trees that we've taken out or were destroyed by the storms.
So I think you answered my question, you said 30 trees or was it 30% will be going to homeowners?
Approximately 30%, or I believe, uh, John told me it was like 27, 28 trees out of the 130.
Because I know there's a lot of residents that, um, lost trees during the ice storms this past winter and they've been questioning, are we going to come up with any type of a program to maybe offer to the residents to replace the trees? Years ago, and you're probably not familiar with this, we used to have a program where we would partner with, um, a local, I believe landscaping company and we got trees at a lower rate and the residents were able to purchase those trees. I can't remember who planted them, um, for the residents, because some of them were quite large. I'm not sure if the mayor remembers, but is there any type of program like that?
To my knowledge, that program actually still exists, but as we did the transition during COVID from Leo to John Thompson, there really hasn't been an outpouring of desire to buy additional trees. However, we have put in the budget for next year to reestablish that program and purchase $100,000 worth of trees and plant those mainly focused on those homeowners who lost trees either in this storm or in the great wind shear of three years ago.
Wonderful, I'm so glad to hear that. And they will contact your department and then your department will go out and?
We've been contacting them.
Okay.
And as the trees became, become available, we have a master list of those who lost. I mean, they were contacted years ago saying, if you're interested, tell us. We'll then go back to that list, call them and say, we have a tree available, are you interested? Let's work it out.
Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes, um, the trees, there are a variety of trees in, on the list. Some are fast-growing and some are real slow-growing. Uh, about what size are the, are the trees that you, you, you purchase?
The trees we're currently purchasing this year are somewhat on the smaller side because that's really all that's available right now, they're one-and-a-half inch caliper. Um, but they, within the first five years, they actually grow faster than the normal two, two-and-a-half caliper. On the evergreens, they're six to eight feet tall. So we're hoping that within a five-to-seven-year basis, they'll be strong mature trees.
I know, uh, some of the trees were oak trees and it would seem like it would take 50 years for them to get to be, uh, big enough to put a swing in it, you know?
And that's the problem with oaks and that's why you don't really see a lot of them as, um, street trees. Number one is oaks tend to have a shallower root base and so, you know, the salt damage and people just walking over them tend to kill them and they are awfully slow-growing.
Right.
If you're going to have the house for 75 years, yes, you can take pride in that small little white oak you planted. But they're not pushed as a street tree because they are, um, they don't tolerate salt and the foot traffic and they're slow-growing.
Okay, and the trees that you're gonna plant in the, uh, space between the road and sidewalk, do the homeowners know that they're responsible for those trees?
Yes, um, in fact, we give them, when it's planted, a little, like, new tree kit to tell people it's coming on, they're, they're getting the tree and how to prepare it. According to the contract documents, the first two years will be the responsibility, uh, it will have insurance that if the tree dies within those first two years, the, um, planting company is responsible for replacing it.
Okay.
And, but we also want to make sure that the homeowner knows that they need to water it and they need to take care of it, they need to not run their lawnmower into it, um, and that they need to maintain the mulch ring around it.
Okay, because a lot of people think, well, it's on city property, therefore it's not my responsibility, but, uh...
And we try, try to weed those people out and that's why we don't, we call them and make sure that they really want the tree and they understand how to, you know, raise a tree.
Okay, thank you much.
You're welcome.
Um, just one question, you mentioned, you know, the people, the residents who lost their trees during the storm will, are on this list. Does that list also include homeowners who lost their tree due to road construction?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why we really are at a backlog of trees because we, we haven't planted trees in a long time in such a massive amount.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Banks, your next item was M, the code enforcement budget adjustment for contractual weed mowing and professional services.
Yes.
Good evening, council, good evening, everyone.
Good, good, good evening. So are we saying in this item that we are no longer going to be using the seasonal people that we hire and you're now going to be using contractors?
No, this is a request, I'm sorry, this is a request to, um, reallocate, uh, a certain amount from the weed inspector that we did not use the prior year. So we have wages left over and we'd like to move them to contractual to pay for services until July 1. So we have a contractor, um, ready to start services when we, when we receive the executed contract from purchasing, um, but we'd like the funds for him to begin servicing today through June 30th.
And, and this will be for mowing the lawn?
Yes, for weed mowing services, for any court-ordered abatements that are pending and any other contractual services.
So are we still, do we still have contract, not contractual, seasonal people that are within your department that are going out and doing this?
We currently have no seasonal employees. We have one full-time blight abatement person. We've been unable to fill the positions.
So what are we gonna do with all the equipment that we've purchased over the years?
Well, hopefully it will be in use this fiscal year coming up. We have, uh, interviews, an interview scheduled with a temporary, um, hopefully a temporary seasonal person tomorrow. Uh, we've been reaching out to, uh, the public to attempt to hire new talent. But currently, we do not have any seasonal staff.
Okay, um, I'm not sure if I've seen any advertising on that, just, just FYI, but I do know, I believe it was last year and even the year before, we purchased a lot of lawn equipment. I believe there's a cage in the lower level with everything and I, I don't, don't want to speak, but we had quite a few people that were out there and it's my understanding we were cutting the lawn and then charging the property owners and that was going on the, um, the SAD, you know, that we approve every year.
Yes, we use both contractual services and our, our, our internal staff. So we have one staff member who is using the lawn equipment currently. The mowing equipment, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, because we're not using, uh, seasonal workers, but, uh, contractual people, do we have enough money in the budget? Because I'm sure it was budgeted for, for seasonal workers. So do, would we, do you have enough money in the budget to get us through the end of this budget year?
I know, that is why I'm requesting a budget adjustment from our temporary wages account to our contractual professional account to get us through the end of this fiscal year. We do have enough budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, for the next year?
Yes.
But for the balance of this year, because this is a kind of a surprise that you don't have seasonal workers or whatever. So you budgeted for seasonal workers for this budget, but you have to go to contractual workers, which I'm sure costs more than seasonal workers. So that's the reason I asked the question.
Sure, we, we just need enough funds to get from this point to June 30th.
Okay.
But the next, the upcoming 2023, 24 budget is budgeted properly.
Okay, and the second question I have is, does code enforcement, uh, are you going to recognize no-mow May?
No, the city of Southfield is currently not recognizing no-mow May. We are enforcing our ordinance.
So if somebody doesn't mow their grass, you're gonna give them a warning or a ticket?
Yes, we, we post a public notice in the paper every year and, um, as a courtesy, we do send a notice to property owners, uh, when the, when the grass is in violation. I'm sorry, when the weeds are in violation.
You understand the, uh, reason behind the no-mow May?
Yes, to attract, um, I believe butterflies and to attract insects to...
Bees?
Yes.
Bees so they can pollinate the flowers to, uh, because there's a, a problem with bees dying? We're losing a lot of, of honeybees? That's the reason behind the no-mow May? So when the flowers are blooming, the bees can start pollinating them?
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
But we have to, you know, code enforcement has to enforce our ordinance unless something changes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beeks.
Thank you.
All right, council, so we have agenda items. A, approval to purchase a rescue task force personal protection equipment for the fire department. Item B, authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department. Item D, receipt of bids for Denso Drive reconstruction. Item E, authorization to purchase a zero-turn X-Mark lawnmower for the park services. Item F, reimbursement agreement with the road commission for Oakland County for 2023 season street sweeping services performed by the city and county roads. Item G, authorization to purchase de-icing salt. Item H, a receipt of bids for uniform services for public works. Item I, proposed sale of real property on Westland Drive. Item J, a receipt of bids for tree planting. Item K, to authorize an agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions LLC to arrange the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival at the Southfield Municipal Campus on August 11th and 12th, 2023. Item L, additional leaking underground storage tank remediation. And item M, code enforcement budget adjustment for contractual weed mowing and professional services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move the approval of consent agenda items A through M as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve consent agenda items A through M with the exception of C. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. I know that was a little bit long, but I appreciate it. All right, next we have agenda items for discussion and/or action. And we have our first presentation regarding rezoning request with an ODD agreement with Design House to convert an existing office building to a climate-controlled interior storage.
Good evening. Um, petitioner is Design House Architecture. The property is located at 16025 Northland Drive on the northwest corner of West Eight Mile Road and M10 Lodge, southbound freeway. Existing zoning is B3 general business and the request is an overlay development district for the conversion of the existing 128,000 gross square foot general office building to climate-controlled interior self-storage with a future phase of mixed-use development along West Eight Mile Road. This is the former AT&T building that's been vacant for many years. Now, there's a close-up of the site. And, uh, street view from both, um, Northland Drive looking south and West Eight Mile Road looking north. Uh, as previously stated, the current zoning is B3. Future land use is downtown development authority subarea. Uh, council recently approved the eligibility of this site as an overlay development district. This is a conceptual site plan for, um, the existing office building conversion and a future either hotel or retail center, uh, in a future phase. So phase one, uh, is the consideration of the climate-controlled storage. Phase two is a future phase with access off of Eight Mile as either a hotel or some other type of retail development. Uh, this, this is the, um, site plan that incorporates many of the design elements of the Northland Overlay Development District to complement what's happening at the former Northland site. Some details of a future phase with landscaping and perimeter, um, streetscape elements and then a colorized version of the site plan, fully developed with all the bells and whistles. These are floor plans showing how each of the floors of the existing building will be converted to self-storage climate control. and colored elevations. And before we get into the renderings, I know Mr. Alice Sevis is here, the DDA Director, with a recommendation from his board, and then we'll have Mike from Design House go through some of the concept drawings and we'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Good evening, Mr. President and Honorable Councilmembers. On November of 2022, the DDA Board had the pleasure of listening to the development and provided 100% unanimous recommendation to move the project forward for your consideration. I must say that I have had the opportunity to tour the building. It appears that it is a turnkey lease or sale, meaning that the owner, the tenant can walk in, begin operations by just plugging in a computer. I also know that there have been several parties that have looked at the building for sale or for lease and none of those have come to fruition. The concern of the DDA Board is, they made the recommendation, was that the building is, the front of the building is facing north at the corner of Northland Drive and Northwestern Highway and the back end of it is along Eight Mile Road. It's a very, very large building. It's over 100,000 square feet. The concern is not the building or the condition of the building itself, but the proximity to several other empty buildings surrounding it. And that would be, first of all, the Reynolds Building, which is across the street, directly across the street and has been vacant for quite a few years. It's now in the tax foreclosure, although there have been at least four purchase agreements that were presented to the owner of them, all of them which have been declined. The second one is, as we all know, the vacant Michigan Inn Building, which is less than a half mile away. That has been vacant for 10 years or maybe a little bit longer and is currently in bankruptcy court. The others that are of concern that are around this particular property is the former Spec Howard Flatland that is on Northland Drive and Eight Mile. It's approximately nine acres. There are others in the DDA District such as Northland Towers that has a 60% vacancy rate. The Metropolitan Building, which is directly across the street from Providence Hospital, has approximately 25% vacancy rate, and I think it's actually higher than that. The Advance Store, which is completely vacant, and that's 65,000 square feet, as well as the former Kroger Store. So, those particular buildings do not make it easy to find a developer to take the entire building or even multiple tenants that might be interested in it. As of Friday, Oakland Community College, with its 17 and a half acres available on Nine Mile Road, reduced their price, asking price from $6 million to $4.6 million, which has been sitting there for a while, and even that, I think, is a little high. The second issue that the Board was concerned about was the current state of the office market. Obviously, the instability of post-COVID has created a lot of distress for communities. The inconsistency among the private sector, whether to adopt a hybrid method. Some have agreed to have their employees work at home. Others are requiring employees to be back in the office. Presently, the thought is that 75% of the office workers are required to come into the office at least one day or more a week, which is a far cry from the normal five days that we have experienced in the past. If you look at statistics in the city of Southfield itself, the city is experiencing right now about a 30% vacancy, available lease or sublease with all of their office space. That's extremely high. But you are not the only city experiencing, this is nationwide. Arlington, Virginia, which was the home of the Amazon H2 headquarters, which the city also did not, is in the same boat. They're experiencing a high, high rate of vacancy and are looking at uses that they normally wouldn't use. And so, that's a concern. The statistics that I've provided you, I've gotten from CoStar, which is a national retail service company that provides market data and research and analytics of the office market. And in addition, there are factors that are beyond everybody's control. These include the increase in interest rates. Most recently, the Fed Reserve again hiked the interest rates by a quarter percent. It's their 10th increase in the first, I would say, least year, which is causing a lot of, lot of distress in the market. The cost of construction and then the discussion regarding the future of recession. You may read or may hear about all the tech employees that are being laid off, Apple, Amazon, and so forth. The last piece, excuse me, that the Board discussed was its proximity to Northland. With the 1,300 tenants that will be locating there, we think that there's a ready-made market for those that are not willing to get rid of some of their possessions. And it's close enough that they would be able to walk into the, across the street and take a look at it and make sure things are correctly. So, those are just some additional thoughts that the Board had that we hope that you consider as you think about this proposal in the coming future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could, you know, those economic and vacant rates are dire and we're trying to keep the ship afloat.
We take serious, looking at adaptive reuse of these older buildings. We want them to be viable. We know we've had and seen a number of storage units, but in this particular case, given its proximity to Eight Mile and other storage units that are allowed along the Eight Mile Corridor, its proximity to up to 2,000 residential units and other businesses at the Northland. As a result of COVID, a number of people are working from home, as Mr. Sevis has stated, but they're also doing businesses and doing shipping online and they need a place to store their products. People are downsizing in their office space, not paying the high premiums. They can't afford to just use office space for storage and the resulting loss of employees in the office space has also created a perfect storm. We think this will be a viable investment on a very gateway into our Northland development. We're hopeful that it'll result in mixed-use development also on Eight Mile. And the fact that we're controlling the design through the Overlay Development District allows us to get the streetscape and landscaping elements that will seem like it was tied in with the Northland development from the beginning. So, for all those reasons, we're in support of this redevelopment. We have Mike from Design House that'll walk you through a little bit of the design concepts, which will include art and placemaking elements, as well as renovations to the building themselves. And then, again, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Terry. My name's Mike Pizzola, Designist Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. I'm here to talk about 1602-5 Northwestern Highway. Several months ago, the ownership team came to us asking to pursue this request and we looked at it and right off the bat, just from looking at the building standpoint, it is a no-brainer for a, as Terry mentioned, adaptive reuse. It's open floor plan, solid construction, multi-level design will allow for easily transition to self-storage. In addition to that, with the Northland Development at its threshold, we were presented a feasibility study. Currently, the area is, the peak threshold is anticipated to be with the current development at 5.50 square feet per person. Currently, we're at 2.05 square feet per person. So, the industry is, the area is very underserved for self-storage. You have five facilities immediately to this east in Oak Park that are right across the street basically, where these new residents will be going to. So, we feel this is a great opportunity to, for the city to allow the opportunity on the site for the new, future new residents to use the demand. We've put forth, we looked at several streetscape elements and tied it to the ODD, Northland Development elements.
Could you just speak to some of the design elements that you showed?
Sure. On the left is the corner at Eight Mile and Northwestern. It involves a little bit of a pocket park, connection to the future retail with the sidewalk going to the northeast. Streetscape elements including pavement, benches, trashcans, and gateway features, plantings, art installations. Something that, as Terry mentioned, we envision this as a gateway to the Northland project and we feel that these elements will help anchor that. The second, let me go back one more. The second one on the right of the previous slide.
You want me to go back? Okay.
Is at the entrance to the facility. You'll see on the left of that, the lower left-hand corner, oh, I'm sorry, lower right-hand corner, would be our identification sign with some, you know, signage, bricks, gate features. Again, benches, a couple benches, pavement connections. And immediately to the east of that is the, you know, Northland Development. So, again, this is an opportunity to pursue not only a gateway feature, but an adaptive reuse for an existing building that we, that really has lost its use, basically, so.
All right, Council. Any questions? Mr. Councilman Fraser?
Yeah. You described the pocket park. It's going to have benches and trashcans. Who empties those trashcans? Is it the city's responsibility or is it?
We would have to negotiate that. I can't answer that at this point. The trashcans themselves will be on public property, off the private property. So, would that be some sort of a negotiation between the, you know, Public Works or even the development, the property owners to take care of those? I mean, who, currently who takes care of the bus stops? There's a bus stop on site that we're proposing to renovate. It'd be similar to that. You know, if the bus stop gets damaged, is it the responsibility of the property owner? Or would it be the city? So, it would be some negotiation.
Yeah, it really does need to be negotiated because if somebody doesn't take care of it, pretty soon it's overflowing and you ruined all the money you put in there to make it look good.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
In the lower right-hand corner, you're showing a green canopy. Is that being added to the building?
Yes. That would be one point of, that would be the portion where the customers would entry, enter, where we would anticipate the office would be. So, in addition to that, we'd also have an area maybe where clients could unload their goods for, to enter the, to proceed to the door.
And what is the canopy constructed of?
It looks like a fabric.
Yeah, it's a fabric canopy, all right. And this, you're not planning any kind of drive-in? Some of the self-storage places you can drive into?
Not at this time.
Okay. I want to point out to the Council that this is the former Standard Oil Building. It's the first, one of the very first corporate offices to move to Southfield in the 1950s. This is, although it doesn't have historic designation, it is a mid-century modern classic office building. I'm glad to hear the canopy is of canvas. Also, the banner that's coming down, that's just being attached to the exterior of the building?
Yes, for signage purposes, yes, that would be a-
And what is it made of?
I don't know if we pursue that at this time, but it would be possibly fabric or a paint material.
Okay. We also have the concern, correct me if I'm wrong, but who purchased the building?
I believe it's under, it's been under the ownership, same ownership who engaged us, so.
Repeat that?
It's under the same ownership who engaged us several months ago, so I don't, I can't attest to the actual ownership itself, but it's been under the same ownership when we started this project, five, six, eight months ago.
That's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking who owns the building?
Through the chair, the applicant, the property owner information is Schaefer JM LLC.
Okay. And what kind of interior renovations are you planning?
Interior-wise, it's an open floor plan, so we will remove any non-supporting walls to open up as much as possible, basement through third floor, and then bring in the actual storage partitions. And then, the first floor, have a small office area for new customers. Office amenities, bathrooms, you know, small kitchen area for staff, that sort of thing.
Well, I'm less concerned about interior renovations because the building has been renovated a number of times over the years, but what about the elevators in the building? If people are bringing things in for storage, do they have the capacity for carts and? I'm not sure of the size of the elevators.
There's currently two elevators on site and we have had a structural engineer perform some examinations and, yes, we feel that the current elevators that cover all floors are conducive for storage operations. If not, we will remediate those and make sure they are.
All right. But I assume they're standard office elevators in size?
There's one elevator in particular that goes up to the top floor. It's quite larger. Again, because there's mechanical units on that floor. But regardless, we will modify it as necessary to make sure it is conducive for storage operations.
Well, does the building have a freight elevator?
I'm not aware of that at this time, but we have had a structural engineer perform, walk through it and determine that it's sufficient.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Given the age of the building, have you determined whether that asbestos is in the building or if they need to be remediated there?
We have not gone that far yet, but I've walked through it. I've noticed myself, I've not noticed anything in particular, but that will be determined as needed through the building process, through the approval processes. And if it is found, it will be remediated as necessary.
Okay, all right.
Do have one other.
Sure.
So, one of the things that I, I live in the area and one of the things I find offensive is the barbed wire fence, which is actually against city code, although I know it's been there for a long, long time.
That's going to be removed as part of this.
That's the first thing we'll take out.
My real question is, how soon would that be removed?
It's up to you guys.
I'm sorry?
It's up to you if you approve this removal. That'll be the first thing, that's the first thing that would be removed from the site.
I know you need some kind of security, but again, this facing Eight Mile Road, it's not the best look and it's always bothered me, that barbed wire fence.
Through the chair, that was one of the first things that we brought up, that that would be removed. I know that when AT&amp;T was in there, they had a lot of auto thefts, not saying it was right. They didn't get approval. But that was the reason that was originally installed and they'll be using decorative fencing and upgraded fencing as part of the redevelopment.
And if you go back to the site plan, that huge expansive parking lot will become a future use. So, there will be more activity up there than what is currently a parking lot right now.
Yeah, I understood that. Really, my question was the future use sometime in the future, but will the fence replacement, if the Council approves this, will the fence replacement be done? but will the fence replacement, if the council approves this, will the fence replacement be done soon?
Yes.
And again, as part of this phasing plan, we're gonna insist that all the perimeter landscaping be done as phase one.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Okay.
So this will come back at the end of the month for a public hearing and your final consideration.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a receipt of bids on interior renovations at the Public Works Building, also affectionately known as The Roundhouse.
Thank you, folks. We have a presentation by Mr. Christopher Ozog of OHM, we're just waiting for it to get loaded up. The Public Works DPS garage was originally built in the early 1970s. It's received occasional updates and upgrades. The last upgrade was to the locker room about 15 years ago. We're now, went out to bid for upgrade of all of the office space. That would be the clerks' offices, the Public Works administration offices, the lunchroom slash break room for the workers, and also the motor pool chop shop, as council president likes to call it, and also the offices where the administration for motor pool occurs. While Mr. Crowe is very nice in calling it back up, we did go out for bid and two bids were received. The engineer's estimate was 132, 100, sorry, $1,333,320. Bids came in, total base under that amount. With engineering contingencies and oversight contractual by OHM, the total expenditure will be $1,345,697.70, of which there is a myriad of funding sources since it does, will take on all of the Public Works functions, which serves everybody, every department in the city. We've had OHM review the bids and they found them to be compliant. Purchasing has also made the recommendation. And I don't know how much more I could delay, but we would be asking the city council for approval after the presentation.
Can you, while they're working on it, can you explain why this renovation is being done at this time? Like with, especially with the offices, you were talking about climate issues and?
We have numerous issues, both climate, let me, okay, let me start from the beginning. The building was originally built with one set of offices, and that was where right now we have the water clerks. And the additional offices were built into the existing building. They were not built up to what we would consider as code right now. We, if, in the building itself, if you're in the office, you will get a fine layer of dust every day due to the exhaust, because it's immediately adjacent to the Public Works storage garage. So you will get exhaust fumes, you'll get exhaust dust. There's numerous colds and flus that are easily passed. It's also, I would say, designed currently right now and probably what could be best described as 1960s highway service station green. It's not an attractive space, it doesn't present itself well, and plus, it's an unhealthy building. We have numerous punches and holes in the walls. My office is actually right behind the women's restroom. So if I'm on a call and any of you hear a noise in the back, it's probably somebody using the facilities. Again, it was forced in where it wasn't originally planned. And Chris, if you want to take and make the presentation?
Sure, good evening, everyone. Chris Ozog, OHM Advisors, and Patrick, I think you spoke about most of this, so. But, so over the last several months, I've been working with the Public Works Group and met with the staff. We established some purposes and goals of the project, so improved the work environment. The original building was built in 1977, a lot of the finishes are original. And, you know, the spaces are old and inefficient. MEP systems, they've been either piecemeal repaired, or again, several are original. And in some cases, some of the parts aren't even available for repair. So end of life is upon a lot of those. Staff safety, originally we had some public versus staff areas. A new entrance, visual cue for the public to go towards. And then building fire and life safety is always something we want to talk through, so. And then lastly, improve efficiencies. We talked to the staff, we talked about their positions, their current space needs, and really what would help them work better and work through some concepts with the areas that we had to make their spaces adjusted to meet their end-user needs. So here's a couple photos of the existing areas. The top left and center photos, you'll be labeled the West Office, but those are, you know, several cubes, a print area, all kind of crammed together. The print area, it's a large format printer, and literally they're turning around by themselves, so they can't even really print, lay stuff down. Top right is what's called the East Office. Again, just kind of showing the date of material, you see the carpeting's worn out pretty good. Also notice furniture systems, because we did talk about that, again, aged furniture systems to assist in their organization. So we talked about standardizing that based on use and functions. And then the bottom two photos, again, the floor, original floor. You know, photo's the center photo, that's in the motor pool area. But again, it looks pretty dirty, grimy, old water stains above. So here's some photos of the break room with hodgepodge of cabinets and countertop equipment. The right photo is the patio that opens up to the outdoor staff space. And then the bottom right is photos of the women's restroom. Again, some old, older finishes and dated, dated system, so. The scope of the work, again, demolition of existing interior finishes and building systems and areas to renovate, I'll go a little more detail on that. Construction of new spaces, all mechanical, plumbing, electrical, fire suppression, and building technologies upgrades. So that includes IT into the new workspaces and work areas. And then we did do some, added some functional windows in some new areas. And then again, a new focal main entrance cladding. We did do a testing of hazardous materials, and there was some asbestos in the existing space, so that's gonna be removed and abated as part of this project. So here's a little overall graphic of kind of the areas that are the West Office area. That currently, the lighter blue, is there a pointer on this thing? Yeah, there we go. So the lighter blue area right now, this is clerks and supervisors, water, and a small conference room. This whole area is gonna be really gutted and reconfigured to support their needs. The East Office area, space-wise and office-wise, there's some minor shifts and adjustments. But that space kind of worked well for currently, so we're mainly updating finishes. Central area is the lounge area, again, that's new casework, new millwork, new furniture, and new finishes. And then down by the motor pool offices, there's a couple areas of renovation there. And again, all these areas, again, it's finishes, lighting, mechanical, bathrooms are plumbing. So it's modernizing everything to current codes and standards. And then you'll see in the top right, we are, the current kind of public face is right here, which there was not much wayfinding, so we shifted it down a little further. And we're creating a more focal point for public access into the space. And just to show you some of the plan layouts, this is the West Office area. Again, totally reconfigured, supervisors are up here, kind of a central work area with conference and collaboration, and then the clerks, public entrance over here. And then this is the break room, again, entirely new millwork, these are all furniture pieces. And you'll see there's a lot more offerings in the type of furniture just because, you know, a lot of the modern-day facilities, current facility trends give different options depending on what your need is functional. So again, we went through all the furniture, all the layouts, all the spaces reused by the staff, got their input. And then finally, this is the East Office, again, some minor shifts of walls. Again, all new finishes here, women's restroom, similar configuration in size, just new finishes. And then these are some motor pool offices, again, new finishes, mechanical, and lighting in those areas.
One of the things I do want to point, one of the things I do want to point out is if approved, this will require the gutting and demolition of all existing offices at the Public Works facility. We are going to relocate, starting next Monday, down to the Emergency Operations Center, which is the basement area. All of our telephone banks will be remote. We are requiring, in fact, we set a schedule for all the water clerks and people answering the phones, that they must be at this time. We're very strongly enforcing when they go on breaks, make sure there is no disruption in service. All administration will be handled downstairs in the EOC. The actual supervision of the crews will still occur at DPS and also in the field. We've also extended the hours of the supervisors to 10 hours, four 10-hour days, to make sure they're able to work the workers longer, especially addressing leaf, branch pickup, and grass cutting, and ditching. So we are making significant changes in order to increase the productivity of the staff, especially during the construction time. It's estimated at this point with breaking ground or demoing, June 15th maybe, at the earliest, and looking to come back around the Christmas holiday.
Could you repeat that, you said what, the length of time is what?
Pardon?
About six months.
Construction time is expected to be approximately six to seven months.
Okay.
Plus 10% contingency. Counsel, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, two things. One is, in this work, is all ADA things taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, the second thing is, it's just my comment, it's kind of shouting into the wind so far, but I still think this is an ideal location for solar power. Because we're trying to convince people that solar power and getting off of gas and oil is one of the things, and for us to be a leader, put it on the roof of that, as people come in and in the expressway can see that, they can see the solar power on the ceiling, on the roof. It's too late now, I mean, you've.
Actually, it's not, Councilman. You'll notice in discussions of the budget, this upcoming budget, we have budgeted for solar power.
Very good.
In the facility. What we're going to do, because it's going to overlap too much with the construction, we're doing the feasibility study next year, and then, or in next year's budget. Once this is finished, we will then come to the council with a budget for actually installing the panels.
Very good.
We took your suggestion from December 9th.
Okay, thank you. I'm pleased. I will be quiet before I talk myself out of it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Question, I think you mentioned this before, but motor pool will still be working out of there?
Yes.
Okay, and I wanted to ask, I know that the phone calls and everything for the residents will be, they won't notice any change.
Should be seamless, yeah.
But the calls that's coming in, they're going to the respective clerks, how is that being answered? Is it being on their personal landline or a cell phone, or are you providing a phone?
It's actually, we've worked with IT, it's going to be answered seamlessly through the Jabber app.
On the computer.
On the computer. So it, no one will notice the difference, it's still similar. We are making, and President Protem, you did make the offer, if we needed a private space, the council workroom, we will have two people down in the basement to address anybody who wants to walk up and talk. And we'll allow them privacy to discuss a matter regarding billing or finance. So yeah, we're trying to take on all contingencies during this time.
Okay, and I know we talked about notification, getting this information out to the residents, letting them know that the move will be here.
Right.
And you also stated that you'll be putting up signs at the old location just in case somebody still drives there to come here. My question also is, if somebody wanted a copy, can they still request that? The copies of whatever, like if they want a copy of their bill or whatever?
Yeah, we will still have full functionality downstairs. In fact, we're moving some of the, well, almost all the equipment on Wednesday. All the computer equipment, the printers and necessary downstairs. So come 7:00 AM, we're up, running full operations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, this will pretty much deal with the employees, to enroll in this out and then implementing this. Will we be state-of-the-art with respect to employee workspace? I know it's changing nationwide with respect to corporation, how many space employees are allocated now? As opposed to what used to be in, you know, COVID and everything else. So how current are we with respect to that item?
Again, the most important thing is, because Public Works is an onsite operation, we really, except for answering phones and doing clerical work, you can't do it remotely. All, we've spent extra time and effort to make sure that the working spaces for the supervisors and the administrative staff are state-of-the-art.
Okay.
Again, they're, they work out mostly in the field, but they still need places to meet with the residents if they have specific issues. And they still need working spaces, and that's what we're working for. We're trying to make it as comfortable and as less distractions just to make sure that the work gets done, and that's top priority.
Okay, now, I'm glad to hear that, because, you know, we are changing and the world is changing. But with respect to the square footage of your, of the building, the square footage that's there, can that accommodate these modern square footage and/or accommodate comfortably what we're going to do for the employees?
For the employees, yes, but this is actually, will be the front end of a two-stage project that we're going to bring up in next year's budget. And that is to build necessary cold storage on the site. One of the ways we're able to expand the equip, or sorry, expand the office space was to take up a lot of the cold storage. And so for a brief nine-month period, the equipment will be outside, but we will construct sufficient cold storage to accommodate. sufficient cold storage to accommodate. Right now, we're beyond capabilities, but it, we have to address each section first. And since people wear out quicker and worse than equipment, we're focusing on the people.
Okay, all right. The next, the next one, a question to deal with citizen ed, you know, we, we kind of briefly talked about it, but citizen edu, citizen education, how do we educate, do you, well, one, do you feel adequately that we are educating the citizens who utilize your services? And how is that being tracked? Because it's just listening, I'm not sure I could logically track the citizen education.
All right. One of the things, as you know, a couple of years ago, we hired Raquel Shelby to be essentially the publicist for Public Works. She worked closely with Michael Mannion's office. She then accepted a job with another community, and unfortunately, that, that job got zero-funded. So she's back with Public Works. She's focusing now on the public education on all of our programs. She's putting out flyers, updating the website. We will be posting very prominently on the city website that we are moving and explain all of, you know, if you need to go here, call here. You should see no difference in service level. If you do need to talk to somebody or meet with somebody face-to-face, please call this other person, which I won't give it away, but her name is Nagum, and she'll set up appointments with her, with the individual people, which she currently does now out of the site on Claire Lane. But we want to make sure that people know that we're still here and we're hopefully even better. And one of the main things of the changes in the clerk's office is to make it more customer-focused. Right now, it kind of looks like a call-in center, you know, for robocalls. And we're trying to make it more welcoming and make it more where the information can be shared with the resident when they come up, if they come up.
Okay, then, that sounds good. This is, this last question here, this is probably just, when will, and when and how would you take the pulse of we're doing this right? Then when, how would that, you know, how do, how do you check to make sure there are no he-cups in, in the, in the system?
That's why we're paying for construction administration by OHM. They will put in their inspectors and make sure they'll be on-site to observe, and we will have regular payments and regular progress reports from the contractor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And just to, so everyone knows, unlike previous renovations to this building, all will be done with building code inspections and approval prior to the start of construction.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
I like that last statement. In the new room that you're moving into, is that going to be large enough for the number of people that you're transferring into the EOC?
Actually, because most of, the only will be three people at the EOC on a regular basis.
Oh.
Even though nine people will be centered there, most of them are the supervisors, eight of them are the supervisors, and they're on the road constantly. So we needed just to provide them a place to sit down for the six months, to set their stuff and have their phones to be able to make calls. There's enough room down there, it's kind of tight. If we all meet, we need, according to the EOC coordinator, we need to keep their spaces free in case there is an emergency, but there is sufficient space on a temporary basis for the supervisors and administration.
Yeah, it, it sounds like it is going to be tight if everyone is together. Have you looked at the Markhot Room? I don't know if that room is even being utilized, and that's a large, long room where, you know, if you set a long ta, oops, long table.
Well, actually, the EOC is pretty sizable, and we've been working with IT for the last three months to get it, get all the drops and all of the equipment there. So, you know, that, we've spent most of our time doing that because it was the freest space, and we didn't have to inconvenience the most people. We looked into the possibility of getting construction trailers, but they were too expensive, and given that we'll be in the beginning of winter, it was not a good choice.
Well, like I said, there's also the Markhot Room. I don't know if that room was being utilized on.
The Markhot Room will be utilized during the election, as we have in the, in the past. And at one time, we had, we had human resources in the EO space, and I've been in that room with 20, 25 people for training sessions.
Thank you.
The only downside is it's a concrete bunker. The good thing is, is in case of emergency, we're in a concrete bunker.
Short-term gain, short-term pain for long-term gain.
Exactly.
Counsel, any other, any other questions? I know that anyone who has been to the Public Works building definitely knows it definitely needs more than just a coat of paint.
And a lot of the furniture is actually third-hand me downs. The police gave it to the fire, the fire gave it to property maintenance, and property maintenance gave it to Public Works. Or we picked it up from garbage picking.
I was going to say, probably the fridges in your break room are probably what they found on a.
I, I don't even want to think where some of those came from.
And you, you mentioned earlier that a lot of the, the work is also going to be for some of the air filtration, especially because you have all those machines and the separation between that as well?
Right now, we have no air gaps. In fact, if you open up a door, an interior door, the garage exhaust and fumes come into the offices. We're working very closely with OHM to make sure that doesn't occur. Just as a little anecdote, we have a air filtration system that clogs up every week. If you go into Nagum's area, which is right next to the door, there's a fine bit of dust, and that occurs every day. So.
So you have any OSHA complaints?
Uh, not yet.
I'm just amazed that nothing has popped up now.
And again, a lot of the reason is, is because the people who would complain are normally outside working, so.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Support?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the appropriate contract documents on behalf of the city to renovate the DPW facility and review and approve of the documents as to the form by the city attorney's office.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Banks, to approve the mayor and city clerk to execute the appropriate construction documents on behalf of the city and some of the company to renovate the DPW facility after review by the city attorney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an item for a location change for precinct 13 and 14 for this coming election. Madam Clerk?
Hello, Your Honor, full body. We have, as, as your document indicates, last year, we received notice that Bethy Hutter, which is the former Chanos School, will no longer be available for a precinct, so we do have, we do have two precincts there, 13 and 14, and we are going to be moving them basically across the street to Thompson School location, where it will join the other two precincts that are already placed there. This will be a permanent move. We have checked with the school administration to make sure there's ample space and there's the large gymnasium, gymnasium, which has more than enough space. We're comfortable, and we're asking if you would approve our recommendation to permanently move precincts 13 and 14 from Bethy Hutter to Thompson School.
All right. Just one correct, it's not across the street, it's across the parking lot.
It, it really is.
Councilman Hoag?
You're right.
Just one quick question, Madam Clerk. This is just effective for the November election, not the primary?
No, it would be effective for the primary as well.
Primary as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was all.
Any other questions, Counsel?
Mr. President?
I'll, I will just add, I'm actually affected by this move. And this, this is the, probably the most convenient move for the residents. And as our clerk said, you know, it's about making voting more, more accessible. I know I, I did work with her office and tried to find other locations, and it was very tricky. So this was the most convenient and probably appropriate move.
Perfect.
Yes, Councilman Hoag?
I move that we approve the recommendation set forth by the clerk in the Southfield Election Commission to permanently move the precincts 13 and 14 to Thompson School.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Taylor, to approve the location change of precincts 13 and 14 of Bethy Hutter, which was formerly Chanos School, to Thompson School. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're up to the counsel portion, and we'll start with Councilman Hoag.
Just two quick things. Mrs. Pamela Gerald, you, you stepped out a few times and you missed Senator Jeremy Moss giving you some accolades for your help with him on the credit union bill, so I wanted to make sure you knew of that, that he did acknowledge you. Yes, and then just, also, I just want to wish all the mothers and mother fill-ins a Happy Mother's Day. And to the mothers out in the city, thank you for all that you do, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell?
I have nothing to add.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes. Again, I'll also say Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers. But I wanted to continue from last week, we were talking about returning everything to normal since the change with the COVID status, and I wondered if we given, had given any thought or would consider changing, starting with the top, starting with us, if we want to go back to this day, us and move everything back up here to the council, would we consider that, if that's part of what we want to do? Since we all agree that the changes have, COVID status has changed. So I just wanted to put that out there and have us think about that, and we can let the city administrator know what our thoughts are regarding that. And just to remind everybody once again, that May is Mental Health Month, and you'll see a lot of activities throughout the city going on. And just to listen to our youth, they have a lot to say, and a lot of times, they just need someone to hear them. So please, if you know of someone, or if you can reach out to one, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Banks.
Thank you. I also would like to wish all the mothers and aunts out there, grandmothers, Happy Mother's Day. Also, the city of Southfield is sponsoring the 7th Annual Photo Prize Competition for Public Art Exhibition. They're seeking qualified entries for this competition. It will be from June through August. Let's see, submission will be initially reviewed by the Total Living Commission, and they will select the top 25 entries. If you need further information, it is on our website. Also, this past Sunday, I did attend the, the, I believe it was called the Teen Mental Health Awareness down in our youth center room, and there were a lot of people that were present. I was just amazed at some of the entries and the, the work that the young people had written, and scholarships were presented to some of the seniors to Lawrence Technological University. So I'd like to congratulate the Optimus Club for hosting this. I believe it was their third mental health awareness for the young adults, and it was a very nice program. So I'd like to say thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I would also like to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day, and just as an aside, if it wasn't for mothers, can you imagine how quiet this room would be? I do have a question. When Mr. Sevis was at the microphone, he talked about the buildings being empty and about 30% vacancy. And my question is, I know we had, a few years ago, we had office buildings when people were remodeling them, they would move their people to another place and ask for a reduction in taxes. If these buildings are 30% vacant, is it because people are working from home? And if they're working from home, are the people eligible to ask for a tax reduction? If they have the same amount of people, but they're not coming to work every day, do they ask for a tax reduction? And if so, I would think that that would be improper for them to do that. And I don't know if anybody knows the answer.
Well, I, I would first say they can always ask, and, you know, one of the challenges pre-COVID, we were doing very well with our occupancy. Three years later, we're very challenged. We're being told we're, according to OnStar, that we're in the low 70s again, and we were edging up, we, we were doing very well, and yes, because people have not returned to work, some entities have not renewed their lease, they reduced their space, their subletting, and a lot of that has to do with the new work model and, you know, working remote. Some places, you only go in three days a week, some, one day a week. Everyone's got a different model, their staff is hoteling. Fewer and fewer people have the concept of a permanent office, and they'll share a space and they plug and play, plug their laptop in, or their phone, and they can work just about anywhere. Councilman Brightwell was with us when we were over at CBRSL, and what we saw, no one had a permanent location, so all just plug and play.
Okay. Do they qualify for a tax reduction or not?
Well, if, if someone knew we're moving in, just because that's happening, that's not a basis of eligibility for a tax abatement. It could become the basis of an eligibility for a tax appeal. But there's lots of elements that go into that, overall absorption, price, it, it's a problem across the country.
Sure is.
Every day, there's an article written about the impact on the office market and what the COVID, you know, may ultimately cost us.
Okay. The other question, and I think the mayor probably could answer this one. The Reynolds Building came up in a conversation tonight. Is the Reynolds Building, does it have historic designation?
It doesn't have historic designation. We, we have all the paperwork done, but historic designation needs the cooperation or the permission of the owner. The owner declined, I think mistakenly, he thought it would make the building harder to sell. And currently, the building is now owned by Open County.
By who?
Open, Open County Treasurer.
Oh.
Maybe he'd be more responsive to it.
Foreclosed.
Okay. It shouldn't slip out of our hands if it's a possibility to do that. Otherwise, they could change the design of the building without the, at their will.
Well, it has continued to deteriorate. I was over there yesterday. I was over there yesterday. Again, we have a homeless problem there. The county, I contacted the county yesterday, they need to reboard the building. So, this is a turn of events with the foreclosure, so maybe something good will come of it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I wanted to. I passed when, when it came my turn to speak, but I just want to wish everyone a wonderful Mother's Day. And I still remember very vividly the first year after my mother passed, that still is with me deeply. So mothers are, you know, mothers are very important to everybody's life, so. And I, I want to wish everybody a wonderful Mother's Day.
Okay. I too want to wish a Happy Mother's Day to everyone. As Councilman Frazier said, without mothers, this meeting will be a lot shorter. But I also, I wanted to remind counsel, we have our budget meetings this week, Wednesday and Thursday. Everyone should have received their budget booklet on Friday, late afternoon. Don't do what I did and drop it on the floor and have to rearrange all two hundred papers in number order. It was a good way to go through the budget, though. I guess the loose, the binder was not closed well enough. But, and also, in order to be more efficient with our meetings and question things like that, we did, I did ask that, any questions that you had as you're going through, to write them out, type them out, send them to our finance director, Austin Michaels, by Tuesday evening. So when we sit down on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, your questions can be addressed as we're going through that specific department or that area. So we have, he has time to research, and we're not, he's doesn't, he's not sitting there saying, "Well, let me find out," but we have an answer ready to go. So as best you can, to help him prepare, please be prepared as you're going through those, those budget pages. With that, yes?
Are there certain departments that we will be addressing first, or?
I know that, I don't know if that list has been finalized.
We've asked the department heads, I believe, that first, A through F alphabetically, going through, to be here tomorrow night. We've asked them to be present both night, nights, but we thought we would start and just go alphabetically, page by page. And I think that took you to the fire department for tomorrow night. And on the, on the second night, at least let the others, questions come in pertaining to the other departments.
You, you mean Wednesday, not tomorrow?
Wednes- Wednesday night, not tomorrow night.
I don't, I don't want you to be saying-
Wednesday and Thursday.
And then, are we gonna be meeting here or in the less formal, in the-
Last year, we used this room. Um, we're, we do either or, whichever is counsel's desire.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? All right, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'd like to start by wishing Mother Hoag a Happy Birthday because Mother's Day is a birthday.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday.
Are you gonna sing to her, too?
As you're, as the council is discussing budget, I would like the council to take up the question of the status of our issue with urban deer. I understand we have an earmark in the budget for that. However, I really feel that if the council's gonna act on this issue, that we need to talk to our, our neighbors, at least Farmington Hills. Anything we were to do would not probably be very effective if Southwood goes it alone. But I will tell you, the calls to my office have increased, and you got a, we all received a voluminous, very well-done report from the Wildlife Commission, although they did not make a specific recommendation regarding urban deer. I will also tell you that the calls I receive, the temperature is hotter than ever on this issue. So that, at some point in the budget discussion, I think there needs to be a discussion on that issue. Last Friday evening, this is among other, many other celebrations, Teachers' Week, Nurses' Week. It is Asian, American, and Pacific Islanders Month, and we had a phenomenal reception in the lobby with, featuring nine artists. Tea sampling, I don't know the instrument, but it's like a horizontal harp that was played, and very, very well attended. I encourage people to go out to the lobby and look very closely. Some of the pieces from the distance, they may not, not really strike you, but if you get up close, for instance, the paintings of the teacups, they're not just teacups, they're figures inside those cups. And foliage, and things are going on. The, the knot pieces, again, inside each one of those. It's very intricate detail, and so if you just walk by, you may not notice how much effort has gone into, into creating these pieces. And then, finally, the Southwood Public Arts, the Friends of Southwood Public Arts is having a fundraiser, May nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first at the barn, and tickets are available through my office to that event. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. This afternoon, myself, the, the mayor, Councilwoman Banks, Shelley Freeman, Alice Sevis, we attended the Oakland County Economic Forecast. Councilman Brightwell was also with us. A little upbeat, numbers, continued some challenges, COVID, but, you know, basically, that will be at the employment level we had pre-pandemic in 2025. A lot more emphasis in the, this, in the, this year's report than what I've seen my fourteen years here attending this. A lot more breakdown in income levels of the county by region. Greater emphasis is being put on helping people obtain post-secondary education opportunities, you know, whether it's an associate's degree, an undergrad, you know, a four-year degree, master's, PhD, but a lot of emphasis on certificates and skills. What I also thought was very impressive was that organized labor was on the dais, and that was something you, you would not have seen in the past, and the role that our skilled trades have played. In the last couple of months, I've sat, I've been, I've sat through presentations and heard lectures where the amount of trades Michigan lost during the COVID and the Great Recession, that, you know, in essence, were almost thirty percent below where we were pre-Great Recession for electricians, mechanical contractors, plumbers. And we're, that's part of what's driving our cost of building new homes, renovation, our roadwork, et cetera. So it was nice seeing the value on old-fashioned apprenticeships, where a young man, a young woman can tootle under a licensed apprentice, and learn a skill, you know, become a licensed electrician, a licensed plumber, HVAC, learn how to pave and do concrete work, and these are good-paying jobs. So it, the county has set a goal, eighty percent of the county, they reported when they started the program under County Executive Colter, they were at sixty-one percent, we're currently at sixty-nine percent. So the goal is attainable. Thought the other item that was very informative, and I think our staff does a lot of this, I want you to think about what Chief Baring does when he interacts with our young people, or Chief Menefee in our schools and the program we're setting to encourage people to get into the fire profession, the EMTs and the paramedics, is coaching our young people, letting them see what career opportunities are out there. We tend to be very limited, and with all of our technology today, we've got to open that up. Finally, during this evening's conversation, we are looking for seasonal and temporary employees, as well as permanent employees. I weekly ask, get a head count from our departments, and I think I've got three or four vacancies in Public Works. So people who have CDL licenses, another certificate, we're looking for these people. I have a theory on our seasonal workers. Because so many of them would come back year after year when COVID hit and that pipeline was shut down, we're not getting the repeat folks. Maybe it was a young man or a young woman who was finishing up a degree, and they were, you know, they, they came in and cut our grass, and, you know, went back to school in the fall, and, you know, it was a win-win. So we've got to get those folks back, and so we are looking for seasonal. Parks and Rec is, is also looking for people. They've got to sign out as you come in. I think we still have a sign up at the Berg. The information's on the city's website. NeoGov, which council approved us buying, makes it for a quicker experience for people who are going through that job search. And I know we're not alone from talking. I had a, just a quick conversation with Royal Oak City Manager today. They've got the same issue. I know Farmington, we're all struggling to find employees. We have also increased our wages, and we're doing our best to stay competitive where the market is. That's all I have this evening. Happy Mother's Day, too. I get to cook breakfast, which is always an interesting event.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, good evening, counsel. Mayor, I have nothing further to add. It's up again. Repeat what everyone said, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Um, Council? Uh, Councilmember Frazier asked me earlier if I had anything to say, and I said nothing, but I was mistaken because Councilmember Hoag reminded me of Mother's Day. And so I just wanted to share that the origins of Mother's Day came from the Civil War, and that, and I can't remember which one, the North or the South, that there was a mother who was just simply tired of seeing her, at the time, sons die from this war, and got together with mothers from the other side and said, "We're tired of seeing our children wasted away in what we think is utter stupidity." So, they advocated for the end of that, and that was the beginning of Mother's Day because that's what mothers do. They advocate for their children, whether they're grown-ups or little ones. And so I just love that history and thought I'd share. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, is there anything else to come before us this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.